Mr. Connell. We told her it was for Clark.
Terry, come forward.
To Terry, this is for her.
Come forward.
So, Board President and President of the Board, President Mike Connell, Principal of Top of the World, this is Terry Huswick. She's been of incredible value to TOW. She, I believe you actually opened the school.
I did.
And then taught there for...
I knocked the door.
Yeah. So she's been with us from the beginning. And so her, she's had perfect prints all over the campus. And so for 30, 30-plus years of teaching, and then when she retired, moving into being our garden volunteer. And she, she kept the garden alive at, at TOW for, literally and figuratively, for many, many years. And it wouldn't be, the school wouldn't be what it is today without your, your hard work and dedication. And, and the garden is thriving because of your, your leadership and your support. So, I know that while your Redfern would like to come up and share a few words, she's worked for you a couple of years.
Oh, my buddy. All right, I have prepared a speech. This lady is amazing. So you're gonna have to bear with me, because I'm gonna tell you some little stories here. So, thank you all for joining me for this evening. Tonight is not about me. I got Terry Huswick here by calling her and saying, "Could you come to a school board meeting?" And she said, "Well, yeah, if you're gonna be honored, I wouldn't miss it. I'll be there." And so, that's how it was until maybe just a few minutes ago. I'm not really sure. So anyway, um, tonight I have some special friends that are here to also honor you. Terry's sister-in-law Lynn, where is Lynn? There you are. And I wanted to introduce Lynn. She is married to Tim Carlyle, who is Terry's brother. And he was a school board member here for eight years and school board president during the fire in 1993. Yes, so, Tim is off retired now, attorney skiing though, so he couldn't be here this evening. And some other friends that, well, I was gonna introduce you afterwards, but Diane Bridges, there's Diane, who Terry has godparents to her son. And Lynn, we already know, and Chantel McConnell, yes, those of you and Mike. Mary's coming soon, because somebody else is coming that's a surprise, so I won't mention her name. And Margaret Arnold is a teacher that started with Terry Huswick in 1967.
Yes, yes.
So, all right, don't tell them that. I'm gonna say that in my... So, take a step back in time. Terry Huswick had just married John Huswick in 1957, who was a graduate of Laguna Beach High School in 1957. Shortly thereafter, in 1967, Terry was hired to teach at Top of the World Elementary School, the newest, cutting-edge elementary school in its head of the world. Many magazines and teacher professional publications. It was an elementary school that had you sitting in circles. It was multi-graded. She taught multiple grades at the same time. And it was a classroom without walls. Right? Okay? For those of you who do not know Terry well, as I said, she taught second, third, and fourth grade, many of them simultaneously, and many of... All right. She then retired in 2003. But she didn't really go into retirement. She started the TOW garden with her sister Mary Porter. Come on up here, Mary Porter. I know, yeah, Mary doesn't like this, but... Terry said to me, "It was one of the greatest things for the last 13 years. She has had a one-on-one time with her sister."
Yes.
And the two of them would dig in the soil, holes, plant, do whatever. And so, it was talk about a positive bonding time between two sisters. So, anyway, perfect. So, um, thank you to Terry and Mary for an additional 12 and a half years of volunteer service to the TOW children. Terry did not just come to TOW on Thursday afternoons, but came up many times throughout the week, during the whole course of the school year, including the summertime, to make sure that all of the gardens was well manicured and taken care of. So, we're gonna fast forward to 2015, November, when Terry and Mary both felt it was time to move aside and move on. But, I wanna say thank you to Terry for 48 years of service to the children of Laguna Beach. Marlena Steinbach, come on up here, Marlena. Marlena has been in Mrs. Huswick and Mary Porter's class from the time that they could start taking gardening, which is in second grade. So you had been there for, you're a fifth grader this year? Fourth grader. So we had done three sessions in second grade, three sessions in third grade, and so that's a total of seven sessions, because she did the first session. So, Marlena is here, and I thank you very much. And I just wanted to, Marlena's mom is here. Christina, yeah. Come on, Mary, we have some more special guests.
This, you're later.
So I want to say thank you to the parents for instilling the love of gardening to Marlena and her friends. Thank you, Marlena's parents, Christina and Peter Steinbach, for encouraging Marlena's love of gardening. And, one more special guest, Suzie Klaas. Suzie Klaas is also an original teacher at Top of the World School.
No, no, Suzie was my student teacher.
Yeah, excuse me, my school teacher. And she retired, she could have to tell you that, how many years ago it was that she retired. I don't know, I put her on the spot. Okay, so I think I've gotten all of the celebrities that are here and Terry's, other than current employees. But wait, before we go on, Kenna Brown and Chantel McConnell have created some magnificent things out of the garden that Terry, Terry and Mary have so lovingly taken care of for all of these years, even in these cold Laguna Beach days. We have kale, persimmons, pomegranate seeds, that are all on items that Chantel and Kenna put together for you all.
And broccoli, broccoli.
And soup.
And lemon, all the...
Yes.
And chipon squares with all of the citrus out of the garden and the salad heads.
So, I guess before you get to go on with your normal meeting, you all have to have something, a little something to eat. So, thank you all for coming, and where is Kelly? Come on up, Kelly.
Come on, Kelly.
Come on. Kelly, this is for...
There are old potatoes in the soup.
No, so, Kenna and Chantel McConnell, they did source, I think, everything for the broccoli soup, and for the lemon bars, and for the salad from the garden. So, that's an amazing feat, Terry, to have that much growing. But I'm here actually on behalf of PTA at Top of the World, and so we have just a few things to tell you guys about the outdoor classroom. Claudia was very good in saying that you came every week, but I just wanted to tell you a few things about what that garden is, so we know. Has anybody ever been to the garden other than Terry and Mike? Yes, you guys know. It's a half an acre. It has 30 raised beds. It has gophers. It has rattlesnakes. It has big eucalyptus trees that drop lots of twigs. It has six zones of irrigation, which tend to break often. And it has 30 teachers trying to bring children out there to learn every year, changing over. So it is a tremendous job, and to have one person do it on a volunteer basis without children in the school for 13 years is amazing. It really is. And being there... So, when I think about Terry and the few years that I've known her, I think about what that does for other volunteers that come into the school community here. And when you have somebody like that, that's given that many years as a teacher, and then just as a retired person, it's a real inspiration to other people that wanna give back to their community. So that's what I'll remember about you, Terry, after the gophers, irrigation, and what's new when you see rattlesnakes, and all of these things. It's about, you know, being able to give back and to feel that level of commitment to, to the school. So in honor of that, PTA was under strict instructions not to buy you a thing, because we hear you have lots of things. So we, we just bought you a little thing. This is for you to take home. This is a astrium that we actually pulled out of the garden.
Oh, I recognize it.
Yeah. We grew it for you. These are edible flowers. And then in your, in appreciation of you, we're going to put this birdback into the garden. So, it's a man. The kids helped me make, which says, "In appreciation of Terry Huswick." So we'll pop that in. We also planted, so I'm gonna give you this. We also, yeah, you take that. I mean, you can have the birdback, but it's, it's further school, so when we look at it, we... We also planted an avocado tree. I think you heard the list of the trees that we have. It's pretty much a whole grove of citrus at Top of the World. But the only thing we were missing was avocados. So, we're gonna get a little more, like, fiesta-like with our avocados. We have a 10-foot tree. I had a parent that signed in with Claudia today that went up there and actually planted it. So when you go up there next, you will see a big avocado tree, and just...
But tell them how the tree came about, because it was from a family of the...
Yes, it just, oh, everybody knows you, Terry. So I see a tree, I wanna use this tree in the garden, and I need to get permission to take this tree from the spot that it's in. It's not in the right spot in its current place. So I asked the owner if I can take this tree, and I tell him why. And what do you think he says?
I am Mrs. Huswick.
Yes, and he will send his children up there when they go to kindergarten to see the tree. And so, yes, so, thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you all. I have been touched by everybody in our community, the children that have been there each semester, that, that, in the garden, but as a teacher too. It's just been a fabulous experience. I think we're looking, being most desperate to be in the city and community, and the involvement that you folks, the parents and the kids, give back to, to the teachers as well. I just, it, it was a wonderful run. I just loved the volunteer aspect. And the, the greatest thing about the garden experience is the kids really aren't on any cellphones or anything. They're just able to dig and play, enjoy the quietness of the garden area, and just really realize the environment that we're so blessed to have. And thank you all for coming. Thank you especially for taking the time for me, and for the tasty treats.
Gotta eat them.
Thank you all. And onward, one thing is, Claudia, I didn't get married in 57.
I got married in 63.
John graduated.
Well, no, I just said Terry Huswick, maybe I said it wrong. Terry Huswick had just married John Huswick, a 1957 graduate. Just in case you weren't counting.
And Claudia, all my friends that have grown up with the word here, and just, and the parents and employees and the staff, thank you for being here this whole week.
Thank you, Terry.
Here, come in. Come and stand over here. Let me get it out of your chest. Be careful, it's tiny.
Yeah, I think I take it. I didn't think it was right here, it was lit.
Anybody wanna snack?
While you are all here, I hope you take the opportunity to help me at the board recognize Grace Jones. Grace, please step forward. Grace is one of our wonderful school psychologists, and we are proud to recognize her tonight for attaining status as a nationally certified school psychologist. Let me share a little bit about the responsibilities of a school psychologist. The achievement that she has attained of becoming nationally recognized is a testament to her dedication and enthusiasm. Took a lot of additional hours. She did it on her own, because she was very motivated to really increase her professionalism. And she's already an amazing professional. The mission of the National Association of School Psychologists is to enhance the learning and mental health of all children and youth. And their mission is accomplished through the identification of appropriate evidence-based education and mental health services for all children, implementation of professional practices that are empirically supported, data-driven, and culturally competent, promotion of professional competence of school psychologists, recognition of the essential components of high-quality graduate education and professional development in school psychology, preparation of school psychologists to deliver a continuum of services for children, youth, families, schools, and advocacy for the value of school psychology services, among other important initiatives. So, needless to say, Grace is an essential part of our support programs here in the Laguna Beach Unified School District. We are thrilled to recognize her tonight for her, again, enthusiasm and motivation for moving forward to be recognized as a nationally certified school psychologist.
Hi, Chantel, I love doing it here, so thank you very, very much.
Okay, please, stay there four minutes so the board can stay.
I did just have a question, because I know we have nationally certified teachers, people do that, and they're pretty much, they do it on their own. It's not a job requirement. Is this similar?
It is, yes. It's not a job requirement, and oftentimes out of grad school, people would become nationally certified. And I've been out of grad school a double-digit amount of years. But I just wanted to go back and really make sure that what I was doing was the highest level of achievement that I, I could really bring to Laguna Beach and to myself, so.
Could you just tell me, so what would that add? I mean, are we these school psychologists, got a lot of education, but what does this add to your ability to help students?
It really keeps me focused on the evidence-based practices that are current, as well as practices that in theory I may have known when I was in graduate school. And then you start working, and you sometimes forget the language that your foundations were built upon. So to go back and to really remember all, you know, who is Skinner, and what did he bring to the table to help kids? When that's not part of my daily life, to follow, you know, site mutations of the 70s and 80s. But what their work showed us is how to, how we are able to achieve things now using those frameworks. So, it is a lot of extra work, but mostly it was just a lot of preparation in regards to my assessment that I needed to, to complete and show that I've actually dedicated more time to professional development through my career.
So could you just give us a real kind of brief discussion of what does it take for someone like you to become nationally certified? How many hours did it take you? Was there a test? What is the deal?
Well, it could have taken me more than typical, so I'm not sure exactly what the average would be. But I did need to dedicate time to reviewing a lot of the things that I was proficient at in graduate school, as well as the application, which you don't get in graduate school, consultation and collaboration methods with teachers and with families to achieve mental health initiatives, and to look at a campus, a school culture in, in order to advocate for changes that make sense for the mental health of all. So it did require, for me, almost a year of weekend work, and, and really pushing myself to, unfortunately, and leave my campuses sometimes, to achieve professional development that was awkward in our district or outside of our district, and also study for a really, really gnarly test. And then it crossed your fingers, so.
Thank you so much. Does any other comments?
No, you covered it, but it's a lot of work. Thanks. Thanks for having the initiative to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate this. No offense.
Okay, we're moving along, and if you folks can grab some food in the back, please. We've got some wonderful stuff back there, I understand. Next section, ten public comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody space? Hearing none, but move along to section 11. We have our students, no, we don't have our students represented, it doesn't look like they appear tonight. Labuka, represent...
So we are doing well. Teachers are happy and moving forward. We have, at elementary school, they just shared with me, one of the second-grade teachers did a Three Little Pigs curriculum, where they had to compare and contrast nine different versions of the Three Little Pigs. And then the kids had to come up with a means of constructing a house that would have withstood. So they did a fourth little pig house. And they had to powerpoint and present it to the class as to why their construction would work best. Then they actually built them, used blow dryers and puffing and puffing themselves to see if they could knock the houses down. And then they had to come up with a cost of what it cost to build theirs. Although, it must have just been for the prototypes, because the cost ranged from like $3.50 to one was priceless. So it was just fun to see how from, on, down to second grade up through high school, we're using Common Core and creatively thinking of the ways for the kids to engage in those kind of tasks. So it's just gonna go from that to Mr. Sogo's advanced people research, Mr. Shenz's project to do hydroelectric that we're sending to Africa. But it's great that the kids are already thinking about that at an early age, so that's great. We're gonna host luncheons at the schools next month to just talk to our members about negotiations and what we can do and how they'd like us to move forward, and so that'll be good to have a positive chance to connect and get input. Thank you so much.
Margaret.
Good evening. Well, we've also been very busy. CSEA is planning to have a meeting on January 19 regarding the notice that you received regarding payroll. So we're moving a very positive approach to that, so that we can do clarification on that. And thank Mr. West for really realizing that we need to have a little bit more discussion of that, make our members really aware. Ms. Winston and Dr. Smith were very agreeable to the fact that through education, our members will understand the process and will move forward with the process. So, you know, we're kind of maybe a little bit behind on this, but we have a great plan of action to move forward with. So that's extremely positive. On January 20th, we're starting our re-class meetings for this year. So that's again, something that CSEA really truly appreciates in our process, because it allows our members on a series level to be reviewed and looked at, which is important, because with the trend, you know, way things change, you could have done technology two years ago, and as you know, we already needed to address issues, and there may be other issues that need to be addressed. Or, for instance, as the changing world of what a library looks like, the roles of librarians may look different. So, we need to look at those as we move forward, and I think that under Ms. Winston's process, we have really addressed some really excellent ways to look at that, so that it isn't just a piecemeal. It's seven different districts, to gauge our process from, and so that it's looked at fairly also, because that's also the biggest thing, that you wanna look at each person's job description separately, but we need to look within a series to make sure it's not out of sync to that process, again. I went with Ms. Winston to the Mission Inn in Riverside to attend SEBA, and that was an extremely interesting process, really, to see the organizational process that they do. And I learned some very interesting things as far as health advocate, for one, that perhaps could benefit us here, and I know that that will be moving forward within the insurance committee. But great to make, again, people aware of all the things that are available to us, even as a small district. The classified employee of the year nominations and ballots have gone out, and so I think we'll be counting those soon and seeing where that is and moving forward with that. And again, that's another thing that's happened over the last six years that I truly appreciate from the point of view that we didn't have a classified employee six or seven years ago. It wasn't a position that even was sought of. And once it was brought to the table, it was started, and now it's actually done in this nominating and ballot process. So, that's great steps forward for our classified staff. On that note, I'm going to, this is kind of awkward. Elizabeth Phillips has prepared a flyer, but I wanna make sure that everyone knows about this. On January 20th, Room 20 at Laguna Beach High School, from 2:30 to 4:30, I do know it's the same night as the school Power cook-off, but I didn't make the plans. Two people from CSEA are coming down to, as I said to Mr. Clonan, I think this is the last time now. Honor me for my CSEA. So they're gonna come and bring cakes, and there's gonna be some raffles, and show the video, and Dr. Smith and her presentation, so that should be exciting. And along with that, President Bill Brerick has nominated me to the Champions of Change, that is a new national classified position, similar to the national teachers. And I received the phone call, and I know as much as what I sent to administration regarding this, but I think it's a whole process, and there are many candidates, because it's the different coalitions throughout the United States, but I'm looking at to be nominated as an honor. But I was told that if you do get to win, or however it works, you go to the White House and are presented the award from the president. So it's a pretty steep honor. So, I appreciate, and I sent this in my email to administration, that we are very fortunate to work in this district. And I, you know, I feel my job is enhanced by every person that I deal with, from administration to all of the classified employees, and especially the teachers that we interact with, as you can see here with Mrs. Huswick. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you. Moving on to organizations, we have, anybody from PTA or School Power today? Any other? Okay, board members. Kenna.
Well, first, can I have that recipe, Chantel, for the broccoli soup?
Yeah, that's soup, that's killer.
Really good. I mean, it's kidding.
My husband killed me.
Then I just...
It's all those good vegetables, remember?
Oh, yeah. I would just like to thank Claudia for taking the lead on honoring Terry, because I think it is so indicative of looking at him as a whole, so thank you. That said, Happy New Year. It was nice to have a break, I have to admit, even though my children left. She was all over the house the entire time we were all, but they've left now, so I'm slightly sad. Jan and I went to the South Coast ROP meeting, right before the break, and it was actually a very, very interesting meeting. I felt like we had, it was first night, it was two, three.
Right.
So the three CAPO members. But it, it felt right. I feel that it's getting back on track. I think the CAPO administration is realizing what they really can and can't do as far as taking under their umbrella. So, I think we're, we're in a good place. Patty's done a really, really good job of, I think, trying to liaise with both, I don't know if she's doing IBC or if you're doing that, but I, I feel good about that. The audit was clean. We had an amazing presentation by Dan Sherman, who's the new EMR ENT guy. Just crazy full of life, but I mean, you'd be a fool not to take a class under him. He was just, he was fascinating and so full of energy and so, so committed. We are working diligently on trying to get pathways. CAPO's a little ahead of us, but we're really working to get pathways at LBHS and exploring, can I say it? Dual credit? Perhaps with?
Settleback.
With Settleback, which would be a huge leg up for our students. The one issue that did come up was the CUSD versus LBUSD calendar. They are starting three full weeks ahead of us.
Next year.
Next year. They just 2016, '17 school year, so...
They're starting mid, about mid-August.
They're starting August 15th. And so, that could affect our ROP classes to some degree.
This year they delayed ROP.
They did.
But we had started?
Because they were, they were only a week ahead of us, but this year, they're three weeks ahead of us. So anyway, that's something we just need to be aware of. But I did feel like that we have... But I did feel like that we have, I felt it was, I felt positive for the first time in a long time. About it, so. That's really, that's all I've got, thanks.
Karen? Anything for me, Jan?
I just wanted to go back a bit to December and give the compliments for the holiday music programs that were thrown in the high school. And again, for all of the emphasis that we put on growing our music programs, it certainly has paid off, and we're giving that opportunity to many students. And the quality of performance also reflects the dedication of teachers for those programs. The, I went to the PTA council meeting this week, this week, last week, as they started off the year, and we had a really good presentation from Irene White on our concussion protocols. And she handed out the three different packets that are elementary, high school, and then parent. And there was quite a bit of interest from the different PTA presidents, but to get that message out to the parents, so that parents need that information, we're providing it for our staff members through different trainings and through that communication, but that it really is something that parents need help in understanding, how to identify the signs in their children and to support this really, the concept of brain rest, which has become much more, the awareness of the necessity for that is really strong as far as teachers and the assignments and tests and projects, and that the students who are recovering from a concussion need to have that backed off. It's not just the physical activity, it's also the thinking activity as the brain recovers. So that was really good. And of course, all the PTAs are, as usual, very busy and getting everyone involved in doing their projects. They do a tremendous amount of work, and we're really fortunate to have that dedication. Before the break also, besides the ROP meeting, there was a facilities meeting. And that's again, Mr. Dixon is bringing forward the projects and under, working with Mr. Weston, we're really looking forward, and we have a lot to do and a lot to do with the balance finances and to be able to pay for all the things that we need to do in this district to keep our programs and facilities on par with what we want to offer. And it's a, it's a real stimulus to have top-level performance when you have great facilities to do that. It really goes hand in hand. The, I just have to mention something about Terry, because I used to love to celebrate Terry's classroom at the top of the world. And her environment spirit has carried on into what I'd say gardener expert mayor. But I've been up there when she's had the lunch, the lunch things come out there and then feed them to the worms, and the kids love it. And just that, because she loves it so much, then they love it. And they realize, and it's that whole cycle. And then I don't think she really mentioned that, of how we could put the food that can get composted back in there, and those worms just gobble it up, and then they in their soil, which then lets them grow all those great things. But I wanted to throw in also an appreciation to Terry on behalf of Joe Rowley, who started that garden, whatever it was, 30 years ago or something. He's not here, and I know he suffers from ill health, but he was passionate, passionate as a, also graduated Lubin Beach High School and going on to UCI and then becoming so involved in environmental issues and recycling before it became state-of-the-art, so to speak. And I, and the garden kind of, it was dropped off for a while. And so I think I really am indebted to Terry for giving that life again. It's such a vital part, we see these, well, I see them, the articles all the time about gardening across the country and what it does in the curriculum for students and how important it is to complete that cycle and that understanding. And so it's, I just am very much appreciative of what she has given to us, beyond what she gave to us as a classroom teacher. And then just one last little anecdote, I attended an open house at Christmas and, before Christmas, and inevitably, not inevitably, it just, I guess serendipitously, it just happenstance that there was a former superintendent, Bob Sanchez, who was here in this district and then many, many years in Glendale, and lives still lives in Three Arch Bay, and his children went to school here, and he was there. I mean, we talk about old Laguna, I mean, that's all like old people. Ron Chilcot, who was on the board at that time. And then Harry Bithel, who was on the board at that time. And I was there, and then Charlene Bragat. And it was just, I mean, you had to laugh when you think about it. We have all these former board members who were at this one same occasion. It was, it was interesting. And they're very interested in the things that are going on in the district. We see it on, and see it in the news. But it was, I might have to say that, you know, old Laguna was a little bit different in the fact that, you know, it was, and that's what Terry has still is. And I think as long as we keep that spirit and keep that going, we're really in good shape. And I have some articles, I believe, and one of them actually is from the Arbor Day Association, and it has to do with programs and with trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Smith?
I have no report tonight.
Dean?
So we've had a lot of analyzing with the high school, it's very unusual. So we are looking at some security cameras there related to that, deferring that analyzing. But, you know, Mr. Villager's on top of it, the administrative administration site, made its staff, and even director of facilities, and even made it some other sites. William came down and been helping us out. So they're on it, they're there at the morning. You know, they're great facilities, who want to maintain this.
So do we know, do this, or just don't know?
Yeah, we, we, we.
Oh, we do know.
We're pursued.
We still have a practice that we ask for, go to take care of that, I mean, I will see here. Pursue it financially.
Sure, yeah, there's always a consequence.
Are they?
Even though it's only our second week back, we are working strong. Teachers are doing a million new things, it's really exciting to see. Last week, a hundred percent of the teachers who received the teacher grants from School Power sent in an evaluation of their program, all very positive comments and some great things to say. So those projects are really going well, it's really exciting. Our curriculum committee meets this week, and we have, as usual, but even perhaps more so, proposals from the teachers that are so interesting, and you're all gonna love to hear about some of those. We have a STEM science kit pilot being proposed at the curriculum committee that you'll be hearing more about. We have a proposal to add an engineering technology class at the high school, which is really exciting, and will lead to an additional pathway course for CTE. It's actually a project in collaboration with the University of Texas, oddly enough. I don't know why, but we'll take it. We have a couple of history and social science proposals that are very much 21st century kinds of projects. And also the proposal to add an additional ROP class for Scott Whitkop in 3D prototype design, which will fill out our, one of our media design pathways very fully and give it all of the depth and breadth. He's actually going to training, and we're gonna be working closely with ROP to get that class going well. We're also looking at collaborating with CAPO and Salback Valley with their STEM leads, K-12. And our K-12, we're inviting our K-12 leads to meet with them and find out, what are other districts doing, and how can we collaborate and work together on those projects? Our map pathways, as promised to our public and our teachers and all, we have been monitoring student progress to see, is our pathway effective for all students? And evaluating the programs, are we meeting the needs and is it effective? So we have been meeting with the high school and middle school teachers over the last couple of weeks, and we have some ideas and some proposals that we will be bringing to the board at the next meeting that we think will meet the needs of all of our kids. So we want to constantly, you know, make sure that that program is working for our students. So we promised it, we did it. Our partnership with ROP is very strong. And collaborating with Patty has been really, really helpful. She collaborated with us on the CTE incentive grant. We receive $177,000 this year, a third of that next year, half of that the following year, and then a fourth after that. So we'll continue to have some money to make CTE a reality in our district. While they are the agent for it, we get the money directly. ROP is taking no funding from that at all, they're just helping us work on that. So that was a plus. And I'll be meeting Patty this week to plan a budget and set up a meeting with teachers. I have about three or four additional teachers, Chris may have more, who are interested in exploring the CTE credential so that students can actually receive credit and they can be a part of this program. They have to actually have a CTE credential for it to qualify as a CTE class or career technical education. So we're really steadily building that program, it's really exciting.
Lisa?
Okay, just a few things. As Margaret mentioned, we are in the process of the validating for Classified Employee of the Year. And that will conclude on Friday, so I'll probably have to send you an email update about our winners in each category. And then we'll be starting the Teacher of the Year process next week. So it's that time of year, we're excited to be able to honor some really stellar folks. And we'll have more information to come.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to section 12, which is our consent calendar. Do we have any items we'd like to poll?
J, yes.
J, J.
J, we'll poll J, okay. So can I have a motion to approve items 12A through 12I?
I'll vote.
That's Kenna, and Carol's second, okay? And all favor?
I.
Now on the J, I'm sorry.
Questions, Victor?
Sure.
Question that I left on the warrant. Oh, convert it to Dean.
Yes, yeah, we, we had the warrant listing, sorry about that. There was a couple of miscodings when we put into the warrant register. Couple show as student worker. And they, that would be on 12H. Page 12H point 22 and 23. So when it says, that's actually mileage, it's a mileage reimbursement, not a student worker. And then, on the reimbursement for CSEA, it's a travel conference, it's not a student worker. It's a, it's a key punching of our staff and our error. And then maybe, you might have the last two pages duplicated in your reports. We've had some reports that have duplicated, so the last two pages are duplicated. Other than that, we can have that.
Thank you. Thank you, we have a comment on J.
Well, we have to let this, you mean, everything without J? Jane's the exception.
Yes, I know it is.
I second.
Okay, on the favor.
Hi.
Okay, so now moving on to J. Yeah, J, I'm commenting.
So.
Oh, let's make it, so who's Kenna, second is Carol, sorry. Yes?
And then just, now, now you can just take a vote.
You just want to, okay, we need to roll for on this?
We need to roll for?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Normanin?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
No.
Mr. Lantito?
Yes.
And Mrs. Perry Zex?
And according to our protocols, that if, I supported the concept of suspended expulsion.
All right, moving on to section 13, overview Lubin Beach Unified School District Student Social Emotional Support. Need a darling messenger, Irene, I could be, I'm starting.
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to introduce, introduce the topic while Irene gets set up. I just wanted to say that while we are a heavily academic-focused district, there is an awful lot of attention paid to our students' social emotional needs at all levels in our district. And having been and worked in so many districts in Orange County, I want to make sure that I recognize or say verbally how much attention is paid to social emotional support for students in our district, and how carefully our psychologists, our counselors, our special education staff, our general education folks work toward that end. And they are, like everything else, like we are in academics, they are constantly evaluating programs and looking at needs and gaps for students. And I'm here to tell you, and look, oh, what a force.
Is this reminding?
Tell us where they are right now. Irene, please take it.
Thank you, sorry for interrupting. I'm really excited that our entire guidance team, minus one, was able to participate this evening. And I do want to share with you that what I, what I think that I shared with them is that it's optional for them to participate, that it was not anything that was required. And I believe because of the topic that we're talking about tonight, it hits to the core of their work on a day-in, day-out basis. And I really feel like they wanted to send a very strong message that they want to do right by all of our kids. I'd like to introduce each of them, and I'll start with Jeannie Brown. At the high school, Nicole Rosa. Angela Pylon. Brad Rush. Lila Samia. I'm now. Joel Antukis. I needed to remind her. Lisa Martinez?
Masa now, this is.
Lisa, Masa. Nancy Morse, I remembered. Grace Jones, now I'm gonna be embarrassed forever. Grace Jones, who you met earlier this evening. And then I'd like to make a special introduction to Keely Chisholm. Keely Chisholm is a, is a school psychologist by training. And she worked in our district a few years ago when her family, her husband's job was relocated, or actually took another position. To make a long story short, Lubin Beach was always the place that they wanted to return. And so they've come back and made it their home with their three children. And the timing couldn't have been perfect, because in the special ed department, as well as the guidance department, we were really feeling like we weren't meeting the needs of all of our students. And I made a request to the board to get some additional support. And fortunately for us, Keely was available to step in. And then she's been instrumental in helping us guide some of the work that we're moving forward and that we're gonna share with you tonight. So with that said, I'm gonna raise our little. I'd like to just briefly share with you what our goals are tonight. I want you to have an opportunity to interact with our guidance team. We want to discuss the roles of our guidance team members. We want you to learn what we're doing to address the changing student needs. We want you to learn about our current supports at Tier 1, Tier 2, and 3. And we want to share with you our work in the area of developing our guidance plan. I hope you see that nine-foot document on there. We're gonna talk about that in a little more detail. And I just want to remind you that our guidance plan do not only focus on social, post-personal social development, but they also focus on the academic as well as the college to career. Okay, well, they, important work that they do. As you're aware, psychologists and our counselors play a critical role in addressing students' needs on a day-in, on a day-out basis. This year, one of the changes that we made is we were able to place a psychologist at each one of our sites. We have a full-time psychologist at each of our campuses, which in no doubt is making a positive impact. As you know, our guidance staff do many things. They have many, many hats. It's not just sitting in their offices, bringing in kids and talking nice-nice, building self-esteem. They're dealing with lots of issues, lots of behaviors, testing in special education. There are just too many and too numerous, there's too many tasks to list out. Our teams possess a high level of expertise. In fact, we had the opportunity to sit down at dinner, and we were talking about just amongst our group. We have, we have individuals that are soon to be married, and we have staff members that have raised kids, and are college graduates and in great positions. So we have a lot of expertise among us that we're able to share with each other. They're caring adults, as you can see, and they form connections to our students and help them make good decisions, work through problems or tasks. And what you don't always hear about is how they prevent tragedies. I'm very proud to work with the group, and I get emotional when I talk about my piece. And I know they're not my piece, it's the district piece. But I do feel very particularly possessive about them, because they certainly share my passion for making a difference in our kids' lives. Why do we need to change our practices? Well, 23% of American children are being diagnosed each year with mental health condition. So it's no big secret that our schools are being impacted. As you can see, we've listed out in ages 3 through 17 the most common disorders. And in ages 12 through 17, you can see, in addition to the ones above, the other things that seem to face our kids. One of the research, research that we did in preparation for today, we learned that the World Health Organization predicts that in the year 2020, depression will be the second leading, leading cause of human suffering. So what does that say?
And so we want to know what do our students, what do our students worry about? You know, at elementary school, we're seeing that they're worried about being bullied. They're worried about divorce, natural disasters, and even more so now, guns and violence. At the middle school level, they're worried about not having friends, parent embarrassment, being different appearance. And then at high school, fitting in and peer pressure. And I wanted to just highlight an article that I recently read that I think is such a great article, and it's, it's actually from a researcher named Patrick Cook Deegan, and he's from Stanford. And he has basically done a decade of research, looking mainly at high school students. And he posed the question, he said to thousands of students across the nation from all sorts of backgrounds and different types of schools, private schools, public schools. And basically, he just asked the question of the students, what do you feel about school? And the students came up with two main ways that they feel about school. And one of them was they feel disengaged, and then the other one was intense pressure. And the interesting thing about it is that, you know, he took it further. Why do you feel this pressure? And the students basically said, well, I feel like my purpose in going to school is just to get into a good school later. And he said, okay, well, so why do you feel like you need to get into a good school, right? And he said, okay, well, so why do you feel like you need to get into a good school, right? And the students, vast majority of the students said, I really don't know why. And so, yeah, it's pretty amazing. And so his research is looking into kind of a purpose-driven, um, model curriculum. And he's basically saying, you know, why do we have to put purpose way out here? Why can't every day have meaning and purpose for students? You know, why can't we find a way to create that passion for every single day, instead of it being some intangible way up here that some students may be feel like they can't reach that purpose? And, and so I think as we look at these, you know, aspects of what our students worry about, um, looking at how do we create purpose and meaning into every day for students?
One of the things that we know is we need to change our focus. We can't just focus on academics, and not that we do. We do many great things in Laguna Beach related to social emotional supports, and you're going to hear them. But we want to continue to drive home that we have to have a dual focus for success.
So, all that information about changing needs of our students, what are we doing about addressing the needs of our changing students? Well, there's a lot going on, but as Irene and Keely so far shared, we really see a difference across the district at all sites, uh, certainly the social emotional needs of our students. So what we're doing currently is we're examining our, the supports we have in place now and really trying to shift our thinking to a more prescriptive model. So making our interventions and supports really more directly connected to what our students and their families need. For example, at the high school, as well as at elementary, um, we've offered for several years now, some parent education opportunities. And I think we found a little more success at the elementary level where those parents, when approached, would participate. What we find at the high school, and I think a little bit at the middle school as well, often we offer it, even if parents seem interested, they often don't then participate. The parents who could really benefit the most are not the ones participating. So, one thing specific to the high school, we're actually now just in the process of trying to develop a new type of intervention for students that would be considered more mandatory. So those kids that haven't been identified, we're still working on what that looks like, what's that criteria. But then offering those students four sessions, collaborating with Dr. Jerry Wykens, who's done a lot of the work with our district, and having a parent piece, but making it mandatory. And by operating it within the school day, then you don't have to worry about, okay, our parent's going to take their kids, our parent's going to participate. And, and by tying it to something that they have to do, the hope is that it will be more prescriptive and that those people who need it most will be accessing it. We're also across the district identifying the gaps in our current services. I know that we'll be talking a little more in depth about the guidance plans that Irene mentioned, but that really has been an activity that has helped us not only look at what we're doing well, because we also want to look at our strengths, things that we could still improve upon, that we're doing okay with, but definitely the gaps. Again, at the high school, one of the things so far in this process class that we've really seen is we have a gap specific to the social emotional needs of our kids. And so as we move forward with this process, this is really going to help us identify, okay, what are those needs? From that prescriptive perspective, what do we need to do about that? And then looking at, do we have the resources, the expertise, all those kinds of things to make that happen? Um, obviously communicating the current needs, like we're doing here tonight, is making more connection between the board. So you guys are informed of what we're doing, our administrators working with all of us who are in the field doing this, so that we're all on the same page. I think what's really been nice, although we're not done with the guidance piece yet, we are actually already in progress of designing supports to address needs so far this year. Um, we've had two great opportunities. Well, one that's district-wide, we, uh, have recently started referring district-funded for families that we find are in need of counseling. They either don't have access to, or maybe they do have private insurance but are struggling with navigating through that. Uh, it's something that is just, I'm going to give credit to Irene because it's something that she, uh, really created based on needs that she was hearing. I can say at the high school level, um, we've utilized this a couple times now, just within the last month. And basically, these are families who are in need of immediate counseling. And we can refer them for up to five sessions that the district is funding. And those people help connect them to then other resources. So it's not intended to be an ongoing thing, but it's also intended to help if there are kids who really need that support immediately. And clearly is something that might be beyond the scope of what we can do. And without going into details, I would say the ones that we've referred were, were pretty, they led to significant intervention, and it's been a really, really nice thing. Another thing I know that's currently in process is to collaborate with, uh, MISSION. And looking at, they have a new program that looks at dual diagnosis of kids with social emotional, mental health issues, but also then that substance piece, because we see a lot more of that, again, not just at the high school. I think our kids are experimenting earlier and earlier. And you often see that reciprocal relationship. Sometimes kids with those social emotional issues start using, who knows which came first, but it makes it more complicated often. And those are the kids that we lose harder to get engaged in school and help. So looking at how we can collaborate with them, partner with that, and see how the district can help families access those support services. So, uh, we're not there yet, but we're in process and we're still, I, I, for me, I think it's really exciting. Again, I can speak for the high school, part of this whole process has been really helpful in that we're currently restructuring our MTSS process, which really is just the framework or the systems of how do we do all these things, whether it's social, emotional, academic, or otherwise. So all this work that we're doing to be more student-focused in terms of how do we better address those things is actually helping inform, I think, all sites in terms of, okay, where are these gaps? And how does that, what does that look like in that figure MTSS framework, so.
Okay, so when looking at the tiers, you have the tier one, which is universal, tier two targeted, and the tier three intensive. And as you can see, we haven't actually seen it all printed out, that's crazy. I think it's beautiful, but, um, all of those, they're color-coded within the tiers, and it's very detailed up on that Excel sheet. Uh, but you all should have also the handout, systems of support, which also outlining some of them as well.
Do you have that?
We could bring up this.
Yes, take a hint. So we're going to kind of highlight a few, each site is going to highlight a few of them that we've been doing, just to kind of show that you guys know what's going on and different aspects like that. Uh, so with tier one. So here's the high school tier, just a few of the things that we want to highlight. So for tier one, um, you can kind of see that we're doing, currently classroom visits. So we're going to class rooms, we're talking to them, all, all students, each grade, speaking about various things. And then following up those classroom visits with parents for each grade level. So we're having those, which are just for everyone. We're also doing individual meetings. So right now, on Thursday to Friday, we're going to meet with half the students who are in global studies. And we're doing one-on-one four-year planning with the ninth graders. And so we're going to go through their whole academic background now, what their plan is for the future. And then we're going to send that home as well, so the parents have a copy as well as a review. So when, when registration comes in March, they've kind of looked through things and looking at that. We're also going to be outlining high school requirements, but also college entry requirements. So you're kind of combining those two things with the ninth grade individual four-year plans. We do individual, um, with all juniors, um, and their parents, hopefully when they come. And so we talk about academic, we talk about college, we talk about anything else that's going on, we talk about grades. Um, so we do a lot of that. And then we do individual college planning meetings for seniors as well. So that's a lot of, with, really, application time is happening and they need the help in terms of, you know, looking at FASsA or looking at the application, letters of breath, and there's all these different aspects, and how does it all come together in that regard?
And we get to the tier two, we're looking at individual academic counseling for every student who wins a D or an F, which is always really fun. And you look at the numbers and just based upon how our days are structured. So let's say I have junior conferences for three hours, then I have an hour slot, and then we try and call as many kids as I can in. So we're looking at two hundred ninety-six kids that we had to try and meet with, um, for the six-week progress report, IDs or apps, and then two hundred and sixty-eight at the twelve-week progress report. I was able to get through everybody at my sixth-grade grading period. Not much my play, much junior conferences. Come time right now, where you're like, okay, I've got an hour in my day to try and do this. You call the kids in, try and meet the kids when they're not in AP Calc. And it's typically not the kids that are current, but, you know, they come in, um, from their classes, and you start asking them questions, find out what's going on. And that leads to what's happening in the home. And so I have a line docked up with eight kids, and I have one student telling me that their family is suffering right now because there's a divorce, these, you know, students are all depressed. And so these meetings are just a, you know, hi, how are you doing, what's going on? Have you talked to your teacher, where are you with STL? They turn into these extended dialogues with these students in order to meet those needs of this mass amount of students out there, can become a bit of a challenge. Um, and then we have recommendations for support classes. So oftentimes from those meetings, I'm now lead into a student study team meeting, or maybe a reevaluating of my goal for our plan, or connecting with a case carrier, connecting with a school psychologist, and then trying to have a meeting from there. Um, but recommendations for, for support classes oftentimes come out of those, um, that tier two academic meeting that we help our students to talk about things. And then with the addition of, um, Keely, it's been extremely helpful. We have, um, students that need that one-on-one personal counseling, we're able to offer that. And we're able to say, we have an additional resource here on our site. We have one who's so burdened with, you know, all the meetings that we're in, but hey, we've got this amazing person who's here. And if you're interested, uh, we can offer this six-to-eight week ongoing counseling, which actually was an outcome of one of my junior conferences. Mom started out to let me know what was going on at home. We talked about the logistics, what we were there for, and as a conclusion of that, I just said, just want to let you know, I'm transparent. And so I let the student know what the mom had disclosed to me and let him know that this was an available resource and that everyone needs help with, you know, just trying to function, with balancing everything in our lives. And if he was interested, this was an available option, they were, well, very grateful, so Keely, we're going to have another one coming here. And then there's those team meetings, which are ongoing, those student study team meetings, um, which are varied in terms of what we're discussing, but typically getting down to the root of what's going on. And it starts off with the onion in terms of we're looking at grades, and it's never the grades, it's always so much more that's happening there. And that's a large group of us, kind of wrapping the student support, it's the counselor, it's the school psychologist, we have a teacher, we have an administrator. And then monitoring credit recovery. And this is great that we have Scott wearing multiple hats on our site, WICUP, where students are able to remediate coursework, um, within the context of the school day and then outside through our credit recovery, in which they can work at their own pace, and that's online, self-directed. And that's a great resource for our students who are trying to hang on to staying on track and keeping them motivated in terms of not having to go outside of our district to find that support for students based upon what needs.
So our tier three interventions, and obviously if you get to the tip of that triangle, you're going to be having those very, very intense, time-intensive, needed, um, kids or cases. And, um, right now, we have currently eighty-four students on IEPs as counselors, we sit in on it, uh, every IEP. Even though a student will have a special education case carrier, the counselor is still their go-to. So we are working in tandem, it's almost like a little triangle of love. The counselor, the case carrier, and the school psychologist, it's just a constant wraparound. And so, um, that is something that I would have to say, I've been at three high schools, I've never seen a special education program as strong as ours, which is phenomenal. And the credit all goes to our school psychologists and our case carriers. Um, we currently have seventy-three students on five oh fours, huge and growing. We've had eight new initial plans just since September of two thousand fifteen. These don't always start out as just a five oh four request. Sometimes it's an SST that leads to a bigger thing, and I've had a few of those this year, where, um, a student comes in, they're not doing well, okay, we meet, we try an intervention. The intervention isn't working, and then it's, what's that next step? Is there something else going on? Maybe a parent takes a student to receive an assessment, they actually find something like ADHD or something that's, um, stopping this kid from being successful. So that, um, all this is all, you know, time-consuming, and, um, I definitely have to pay you back on what Angela says. We, we love what we do, totally love what we do. I've never worked harder in my life, I'll tell you that for sure. And when you're looking at a typical day, I mean, I just think about today. I started out in a counseling meeting, and then I went to a college planning meeting, and then I had a kid who had a previous suicide attempt come in with anxiety and couldn't make it through the day. There goes my day. You know, so those are the kinds of things that we really firmly believe in that ASK national standards of those three domains, and that kid, it's a holistic approach. I can't look at you and go, oh, I'm just going to talk to you about college. And when you're having a hard time, they're going to send me down the hall to talk to this person about what you're going through. So often I've had those same situations where I'm having that college talk, and I really, I really did have a girl tell me, by the way, you're the first person I've told that I was failing at college last year. Shifting gears, now I'm putting on that other hat. So we've seen, and I, and we are super cohesive, Angela and I came in together five years ago. We came in seeing the big need for college counseling, huge. So we put a ton of energy in that. We feel like that's definitely a machine that's going pretty well. And now we're seeing with the help of Irene and our whole guidance plan team, where those other gaps lie. Our goals for moving forward, we really want to add more student social emotional support at the high school campus. What that looks like, we don't know yet. We're thinking of maybe, you know, groups or maybe individualized targeted counseling. We're doing a lot of catching the baby down the river and not figuring out how they're falling off the bridge. And so we want to do that more proactive approach. So, Nicky, good, we're listening to the high school side, and we're going to shift gears to Nancy from Thirteenth Middle School.
Thanks, thanks. Um, tier one at the middle school is all about kind of kids helping other kids. And, uh, I think that two of the things that I'd like to highlight are ones that you might be familiar with. One is upstanders, where our assistant principal comes in and talks to all of our students, a hundred percent of our students, about what it means to be a good citizen in your own life and on the bus, and at lunchtime, and to each other. Um, and they sign a pledge, and it's, uh, it's meaningful. And I, I think that that is something that, um, middle school students need to think about. How, what it means when somebody's being mean to someone else, what do we do, stand by or stand up? And our kids, over and over again, are getting used to that particular word usage that we repeat. Um, additionally, although we have all of those, and they're fabulous, united in kindness, I'm going to point out, because it's kids helping kids. It's, uh, the pals and the ASB and the leadership groups who on campus each month of all nine months, nine of the months, we have each group do something different to express kindness to others on our campus. So sometimes they'll just have a banner and everyone will sign it. Sometimes they'll have, um, kindness notes. And kids get thrilled at doing this, at picking up a little thursten pencil and writing at lunch. And it reminds them again and again that social emotional health and wellness is at the root of being successful in school and being a good person and being a happy person. And happy kids are successful kids, especially at Thirteenth Middle School, I mean, any middle school. Tier two, um, that's for a targeted group. So who do you look at? Well, you, I'm going to go to the second one because it's probably my most, uh, to me, it was one of the most amazing things when Core Academy came into our lives, because we didn't know whether it would work. We took struggling, um, academic struggling students, sometimes socially and academic struggling students, one or the other of both, and placed them in a class where fifth period, four different teachers plus the EL teacher teach, and there's some fluidity among those four, four classes. The teacher's job is to look at these targeted kids and say, what can I do to help them become more successful? And it's not just about the grades, it's about the confidence building, working with others, learning to collaborate. Um, one of the best projects that these amazing four, five teachers came up with was to have them all apply for jobs, so that they do a resume, they do a, a letter, they have interviews, and then someone wins. And while this is a skill-building opportunity, it's one that makes them look differently at their own lives. Um, and also, they, the teachers last year had ROP come in and speak to the kids, not knowing whether this would be helpful or not. It was life-changing because they saw that they could do things, make money, design flowers, and have opportunities that they didn't even know existed at the high school, because all we talk about is math and language arts. And then at tier three, uh, it's very targeted, it's the smallest population, the ones that need the most help. How do we help them succeed social emotionally? We, uh, we do lots of things, of course, with our IEPs and five oh fours, the high school talked about that in depth, and I totally support and could repeat every word that Nicole said. Check-in-check-out is one that's a little more unique. And although, again, it starts with discipline, uh, that seed of discipline is just the undergrowth of what lack of, lack of confidence, lack of self-esteem has, has ended up being part of that kid's life. And so check-in-check-out is with the assistant principal. And, uh, so in this case, this year, Nicole King has, um, had students go to different classrooms. They, who, because of discipline problems, they, each teacher has to either give a point or no point. And then that child has to check in at before. And then that child has to check in at before break, before lunch, and at the end of the day. And anytime there's one point before the break, lunch, or end of day, then it alters what the child does during the break, lunch, or after school. Um, and while that, again, is, it, it, it almost, the student initially thinks of it as punitive, it becomes a chance for the assistant principal to connect with that child, make a difference in his or her life, and try to make, make it so that the child is motivated to behave. Once you have a child behaving in class, they're learning skills, they're improving. And so among the, all the other things that we do, I think that those are three that deserve some, um, attention today. And of course, on the, on the sheets that you have in front of you, the coral sheet has more defined interventions that we have that we've talked about in MTSS. Thanks. And now the elementary school team.
Okay. Um, so with elementary, we'll start with tier one. Um, and this reflects our guidance plan implementation from September, based on the needs, um, that we found at our, um, elementary sites. And thanks to being able to be, have one psychologist at each site, we have really been able to expand our scope. So thank you. Uh, before, we were having to focus most of our time, the majority of our time, on those at-risk kids and interventions and testing. And I mean, this year, we've expanded to, um, being in the general education classrooms. And it's great, I get to go back to my teaching skills and we're doing lessons, um, inside of classrooms. So we started with a pilot program last year into the kindergarten classes. And we started with, um, using the second step and the incredible flexible U to teach kids about resiliency, flexibility, you know, getting them motivated, talking about feelings, empathy, um, cooperative learning, um, how to use your attentiscopes, focusing on your teacher. I know a lot of kids are, you know, using their attentiscopes. Um, so we started out last year in kindergarten and once the word got out that we were doing these lessons in the class, um, the teachers were like, wait, how about my class? How about my class? Uh, so we expanded to all the kindergarten classrooms last year at TOW. And this year, we've expanded to all kindergarten classes, all first grade classes. And, um, we started in fourth grade. And we are actually having a meeting with the PLCs, with the fifth grade teachers because they want us to get started, um, right away by being able to provide these weekly lessons, thirty-minute lessons, um, using these research-based curriculum for social, emotional learning to increase, you know, positive school culture, which we know contributes to that student achievement and engagement, focusing on those L cap goals. Um, and so we're, um, you know, continuing with that and being able to provide those services in the class. And so it's awesome and the kids are eating it up. And we're modeling these lessons, the teachers are hearing the language, like, let it go and move on. Um, is this a big deal, little deal? You know?
We're like celebrities on campus.
That's awesome, everyone knows us.
We're really bored of being in the workplace.
Yeah, it's awesome when a fourth grader comes by and they're like, we use our power pose. Hey, we were just doing our power pose. We're ready for this, but, uh, it's awesome that we hear all that language. And, um, and the kids are, you know, we're being able to maintain, even though we have all these additional stressors in the environment like we're hearing, um, to kind of maintain, you know, students', you know, social, emotional, you know, like, learning because we've been able to provide all this, um, additional support, so.
This is for all students in those grade levels, not just the students that are demonstrating needs relative to social, emotional distress.
And I'd like to introduce, to recover, Jolene Tukin.
Thank you.
Who's amazing and I want you, I want to remind you that the board did approve a second counseling decision. However, she, yeah, it's funny, but she's been doing the work at both of the sites, so kudos to her.
Yeah, so, um, since I started in, uh, late August, early September, um, we've been tracking the new referrals that come in for our school-based counseling. So it's not necessarily, um, all the other counselors can probably identify, the door is swinging and revolving all day long. Kids coming in needing some, um, conflict resolution or peer mediation. Um, but when I refer to referrals, it's kind of a, a formal referral. This kiddo needs something extra. So the referrals come from teachers, from parents, um, other staff members, a lot of times from the psychologists. If they, um, you know, because they've been here a while, they have a report with the families and they say, oh, like, let's, you know, talk to the school counselor and see what the next step is. Um, so between both the elementary school sites, right now, we have, um, there's been about eighty-eight referrals, which is, I think, a lot. Uh, I think there's forty at one side and, uh, forty at the other site. Um, and then from those, uh, counseling referrals, um, those students then have a next step for, uh, it might be six to eight weeks of individual counseling, it might be referral for outside counseling, a referral to the school psychologist, maybe consider them for, um, a small group, social skills group. Maybe it's classroom support, so pushing into the classroom. Um, and that kind of goes into the next point to, um, solution-focused lessons. So when teachers come to us and they say, you know, the fourth grade, we have a lot of kids who are just so stressed out or a lot of anxiety in the fourth grade, you know, can, can something happen or be done? Um, these things came up in our cast meetings too. And so, um, me and the school psychologists were talking, let's, let's go in, let's do a lesson or something like, or respond to, um, whatever's happening. So solution-focused lesson, um, using some of the curriculums that Luisa mentioned too. So, so far this year, thirty-two sessions and over eleven classrooms, uh, between both sites. Um, and then small group counseling. So right now, we have, um, a few groups, small groups, starting divorced groups, study skills groups, um, and then groups that were trained to be problem solvers out on the, uh, playgrounds, so like our, our PAL program. Um, so eighty-six students so far this year have received actual small group, um, uh, skills, counseling skills, um, or skills through counseling, um, just to be, uh, more emotionally healthy and, um, just to feel better when they're at school. And those groups are pretty fun. We get to dress up like superheroes and do lots of creative things, it's awesome. In tier two as well, whenever we come up with an idea, Irene says, let's do it. And normally it's a pilot and then it gets really big and then it's hard to continue, but we have to because it's so good. So, um, session one of Friendship Club, which is an after-school skill-building, um, course that's taught by our speech and language pathologists. And there's a lot of social, emotional development that goes into social pragmatics. So the speech and language pathologists have taken on our Friendship Club at both elementary sites. We had twenty-six students participate in just the first session, which is great. And for Fitness Club, that is a morning-based self-regulation fitness activities. It's really hard to describe. What do we do? We do a lot of crazy fun things. So it focuses on executive functioning and self-regulation. And it gets you going in the morning with positivity, sensory input, mindful minutes, and, and just really good, uh, pro-social learning. It's Monday through Friday, so that's quite a commitment. And we have kids there, I mean, we have thirty-eight kids in our first session. And the data from our first session showed an increase by fifty percent in executive functioning and self-regulation for the students on average, which is exciting. And we've also, um, together our site guidance team with elementary, we've been able to provide three different parent, um, education workshops in different capacities. And in tier three, which is our most intensive, thus far since September, we've been very focused on, um, participating and, um, engaging students in one-to-one counseling when appropriate. And if you look at the numbers of students that have received more than three, um, sessions, these are top-of-the-tier kids, very intensive students, um, with a lot of needs. Normally it's, uh, there's family-based needs as well. Um, and that would be twenty-four, um, different students participating in that service over the first three, four months of school. And then, um, Luisa and I participate in supervision for behavioral supports. And we currently have thirty-six students on our caseloads in which we consult and collaborate with teachers, instructional aides. All of these students are on IEPs and have social, emotional deficits that impact their learning and their social development. So these, um, this supervision is intensive, solution-focused, only research-based will do for us, and a lot of data and follow-up, so that's, that's very purposeful. And when we think about our outcome data for our, our individual and group counseling, a seventy-eight percent of our students that participated in those interventions showed growth or met their social, emotional goals, which is a, a pretty significant amount. And there's a lot of things that we don't have control over. And, um, there's one other data point, I love data. Can I remember what it was? I can't. It was good. But, but the work's not done yet, um, and we have a lot of goals for ourselves in elementary as well. So when we think about what's next for us, because our group is relatively new. You know, Jolene came in in September. Luisa's always been a great resource at elementary, but now she's just neck-deep. Um, and so we wanna do more small groups. We're not, we're not satisfied with what we're doing. Uh, we wanna do, um, groups that really address anxiety, divorce and transitions and families, and social problem solving, more parent education. Um, when we do our groups, we don't just work with that student. We send home information, um, weekly on what we're achieving, what terms they can use, how they can model certain things, a lot of collaboration in order to make these, these skills generalize. And then also, we want to, um, have them involved as well in, in reinforcing those skills that the kids are learning. We definitely wanna bridge our tier one interventions in social, emotional development. Right now, we're hitting that K in one really, really great. We've definitely got some four and over at Elmore, it sounds like fifth grade. Uh, but we definitely want to address our second and third grade classrooms in our tier one interventions. Our fourth and fifth grade classrooms are supported by our Botvins curriculum. So we feel like, okay, they, they got some, but we, we definitely want more. But our second and third grade classrooms as tier one are not supported with a push-in, um, classroom delivery model, which is something we wanna grow into. Uh, I think I mentioned earlier about the counseling referrals that come in. Um, but also where we wanna move towards is also a tracking system for the brief counseling. Uh, so the kids who come in during recess, maybe it's a sign and sheet or something like that, but how do we keep track of how many kids are actually receiving counseling support? Um, even if it's just brief, like coming in to vent for five minutes or ten minutes. Um, I know that this happens pretty frequently at both sites. So, um, we wanna come up with a way that we can track that and see who's coming in and, um, you know, what sort of services they're getting and should we start flying them for something further? We also have, um, been beginning a conversation about a universal screener. There's universal screener sets on districts we use for depression, to be able to try to catch those kids that are internalizing and not acting out, they're kind of hidden in, in their perfectionism or whatever it might be. But we also wanna think about a universal-based screener focusing on resiliency. What are you great at? What do you have going for you? What do you, um, what do you, um, innately are, are interested in? Because if we can focus on that strength-based, um, not just necessarily the deficit-based, but what are your strengths? We can support more of that purpose-driven desire, even when they're five. Even if you wanna be a valet princess, right? That's amazing. I love pink too, let's do it, you know? So, um, so focusing on a systematic way to identify where are our resiliency factors? What are the strengths that we have in individual students? And how can we, um, help, help them use those strengths to overcome their, um, weaknesses and become more resilient?
Okay, use of positive psychology, what is that? You know, is that feel-good, kind of, they want all our kids to feel good? Um, and so what we're doing is we're, um, in part of those lessons and teaching our kiddos is focusing on growth mindset. How do we build those forty developmental assets? Um, we're doing lessons in the classrooms to tell kids, hey, you weren't just born with a certain set of skills or with a certain intellect, you can actually grow your brain. And they're getting really excited about this. And how can we build your mind in chief, you know? And increase the accuracy and the speed of your information processing. And, you know, they're just, you know, taking all this in, um, asking great questions like, yeah, can we build it? But can we also destroy it? And we're like, yes, we can, you know, and they're taking notes. Um, and so we're using that positive, you know, psychology to teach them also skills. We're also teaching mindfulness, how to be in the present, in the moment, which is really important prior to test-taking. Um, our, we were teaching, I was doing a lesson the other day where I said, you know, if you stress out before a test, you actually affect your memory, you know, and your recall. And so you're gonna perform less during that test-taking time. So I'm like, what do we do? So we're gonna start practicing those mindfulness skills where we can bring in and use those relaxation techniques and get the kids to be in the present, to control their breathing and their psyche so that they can actually perform better on tests. So that's kind of like that positive psychology, as we said, increasing that empathy and that cooperative learning, um, to increase our, and shape our school culture.
One of her biggest new words this year is perseverance.
Yes.
So every kid should know, it's, it's not giving up when you're feeling like you can't do it. So perseverance is definitely part of that.
And if we increase those poking skills, by the time they get to high school and those things happen and those stressors, they'll have those from years.
Yes, exactly.
They'll already have those skills.
Yeah.
Stop, sweetie.
And, oh, I think there's, there's so much more that we wanna do. Um, you know, part of the standards is, um, college and career. And a lot of times even teachers or parents who have a five-year-old in kindergarten are like, okay, I'm not moving into the college direction right now. We need to teach kids, um, you know, how to read and things like that. Um, so as far as incorporating kind of like that domain with social, emotional, um, we wanna somehow support our students with, you know, how to be learners, how to enjoy school. Um, Keeley mentioned earlier the research that, you know, students kind of just go through the motions. And from what I've learned so far about Laguna Beach, a lot of our kids go to college, which is great. But, um, you know, do they have purpose? Do they know why they're going to college? How they like school? And, um, I think that's what we wanna start as early on as possible, you know, like to.
Can they persevere when they get there? They got there, great, but can you do it?
Yeah, exactly. So how do we incorporate that domain, um, and kind of sandwich it together with our social, emotional curriculum too?
And so why are we doing this? Because the evidence is telling us that it works. There was a meta-analysis that was conducted on the use of the social, emotional curriculums for academic and social outcomes to increase them. They did find that there was a significant increase, um, in our students' achievements and our outcomes based on that meta-analysis. So you can see that there. To reduce emotional distress and also to increase your attitude and all those social skills which are gonna take our kids through their, um, through their academic and career life. So it's about that, the whole child.
And so I just wanna give you a brief description of the process. I think the teams have given you a great picture of what we're doing at our sites. I think it's just a beautiful picture of what's happened with this guidance plan. And the guidance plan was basically developed from ASCA, the, um, American School Counselors Association framework and standards. And basically what they do is they have, there's three domains. You've got the academic domain, you've got the personal, social, and then you've got the career and college domain. And then from that, there's standards. And from the standards, and if you look at the chart, maybe in a magnified glass, if you go over there, there's a lot of information. It goes through competencies. And they, what ASCA did is develop this framework for, you know, nationally-recognized to say, this is a guide, or a guideline for how you can develop, um, a comprehensive school counseling program. And this is what we want students to know by the time they leave. We want them to have addressed all of these areas of competencies. And so what I did is I went around to each school site with my chart. It wasn't on, it was on the computer, thank goodness. But I met with each team and sat down and we talked about first, um, what are you doing? And the, the great part about that also is we pulled in the MTSS piece. Because we broke it down, if, if you can see, it's color-coded over there in, um, green, yellow, and red. And so we looked at, okay, what are we doing universally for students? And then, you know, what are we doing for that second level? And then what are we doing for the, you know, the tip of the triangle students? And we went through each area of competencies. Um, and it was very labor-intensive, but really looked through, like, what are we doing to address all of these areas? And, and from that, then we went to the next step, okay, where do we see gaps? And then you know what? It was different at each site. You know, as we mentioned earlier with high school, they, I mean, oh my goodness, when you look at what they're doing for the college career area, it's incredible. I mean, it's really amazing. And, and what we, I think the, the best thing that I saw from all of this is that it gave us a full picture of, you know, we've got teams working on all these sites. Well, we wanna create a, a picture of the whole district. How can we connect what's happening at elementary with later on what's happening at high school? And how can we get this momentum started here so that we can do some preventative things so that we're not in crisis mode when they get here? And so we realized, you know, right now that there are, there are goals that we have that we wanna step in and we need to do some things that are in crisis mode. But at the same time, I even had an aha moment today and I thought about, I'm, I'm, I'm currently working with our school readiness team right now. And I'm like, gonna start doing some amazing things through the learning link. And, um, I'm with Sandy Benetti, she's doing some great classes down at the library about mindful learning. And so even before they hit kindergarten, she is working with these parents, with these students about all of these things that we're talking about here tonight. So to me, it's, it's, it's just a really exciting picture of we're putting into this place some really great preventative measures that hopefully, you know, will trickle down as the students, um, age up through, through their, their school careers. So it's very exciting.
And now our closer.
Piece of cake, right?
No pressure.
So, uh, just one last statistic. Two thousand and ten, ten thousand, nationally norm, students, uh, population of ten thousand kids, they're aged thirteen to eighteen. What percentage of those students do you think had diagnosed full mental health disorder? Good guess, close.
Fifty.
Almost, forty-seven.
Wow.
And that's a pretty, pretty good, um, sample. Ten thousand kids or ten thousand any participants is a good sample to kind of generalize that. So we see that the need has increased, obviously, which is why the guidance plan that we've come up with and that we're still in the process of finalizing, uh, is very important. It's very important to all of us and it shows the work that we have done and the work that we plan to do in the future. So we wanna finalize that guidance plan. We want to really focus, uh, at the site level what the needs are, match what we've already got, and then determine, uh, if there are needs, what else do we need? And put those things in place for, to serve our families and our students the best we can. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Me, thank you. And clearly. They're doing amazing work at our school campuses. Do you have any questions for us, Keeley?
Somebody touched on it, but how often is what you, if you have students Somebody touched on it, but how often is, if you have students come in on, like, the more casual basis, how often is that communicated back to the parent?
Well, we're limited to confidentiality with the student. That's huge at the high school because a lot of times, kids don't feel comfortable discussing some of the things to the parents. We always let them know, you know, by law, unless you're going to hurt yourself, hurt someone else, or someone's hurting you, it stays in our office. And that's kind of nice for the, to understand that because they have that unbiased ear to help them with things. So maybe they're not so comfortable talking about with their parents. But there is often that conversation that starts going that direction. And I always stop them and say, sweetie, you know, if we're, if you're going to tell me that you're thinking of hurting yourself, I have to tell someone. I have never had a kid who wasn't ready and needed the help. And even though it hurt for me to have to, you know, reach out further, they, that's why they're there. So, so it's not often, but-
I'm just thinking more than, you're looking at behavioral situations. And then you need to have the same thing happen at home. You need that backup where you're trying to change behavior. Because I understand what you're saying. You didn't know what I was thinking.
That's okay. We're not mentally-
I didn't express it yet. But that's what I was talking about, so that you coordinate it so that it's, um-
In the elementary level, our limits of confidentiality are a little different in regards to, in regards to safety and informing parents or whomever it may be. For safety reasons, definitely no similar. But we, we need to involve our, our parents and the caregivers much more purposefully, I believe, due to the fact that they are not capable of making decisions that are often helping themselves at that age. So we definitely involve, Jillian may, may have more contact with the parents because she has more of the access of the fly-by, need to talk with you on my way. But we definitely involve our parents in order to communicate what the needs are. Also, the general, our teachers need to know a lot of things as well. And we let the students know how and when we would be communicating.
Yeah, and I always like to redirect my teachers if there's a concern that that first contact should come from the teacher. Because the last thing a parent wants is phone call from the psychologist, you know, can be very alarming. Although we do have to do that sometimes. But for the most part, our teachers start that conversation. And then they let us know or include us on, CC us on an email. And then we'll start that communication very early on with the parent.
I think also at the high school, when, you know, when you're looking at the, mostly the grade level when they have Ds and As, when you have two hundred and ninety-six, it's, you can't contact-
That never shocked me, probably.
Yeah, you can't contact every parent when you talk to their kid. But we are really diligent in recording when we're seeing them, what date we're doing it, what we briefly kind of talk about so that often, we will talk to the parent at some point. We, you know, when we said, we met with your student on this day about their grades. And so then it comes into that conversation, especially when it gets to, okay, we've met for the six weeks, we're meeting with them at 12 weeks. There's often parent meetings or emails or phone calls in within, there's embedded, there's a political-
Yes. If they need to come in too.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We're constantly out at parent conferences as well.
There's a variety of models that we're looking at. And one of the things that we'd like to be able to do as we get closer to finalizing our guidance plan is to be able to come back and share what those priority areas are. With that, we're looking at how we can develop more student supports. But clearly, nine people plus Keely and I, we're doing a lot now. Adding to that, we're not sure what that's going to look like. So one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to take on things that we can do well. So there may be some pieces that we may need to refer out. Like Dr. Sammy referred to, you know, California Youth Services, if kids in crisis, we need to get that child seen immediately with their family so they can hook them into the next step resources. So we don't want, we can't be all things. We're not going to be therapists for our kids and our families. That's, that's beyond our scope. So we're looking at what kinds of things do we need to put in place? And then where do we then refer them on to that continuum? And maybe have an agency that supports us with that so we can assure that those parents get and students get connected appropriately.
I was reading UCLA is having a, I don't remember what their challenge is, what's a challenge? Because they, they connected that 30,000 people in the United States died from depression earlier. There's, it's a million of lots, so they want to take, they want to make a conversation, take the stigma off. But wonderful, there's a doctor there, like this quote on the challenge is, the opposite of depression is not happiness, well-being, because it's a health issue. And so it was a very proud, that's why it starts as challenge, and it's- But it just started, it just started like a week ago or so, and I'm speaking about the challenge. I just hope he's challenging, I can't remember. I was expecting you to speak about China. And then I did, I love the fact that you guys were looking at purpose and mindfulness. Most parents that talk to me are all about like, how do we get our kids to be more mindful? How can their mindfulness in school? And then purpose, teenagers will say all the time, like, my purpose is like, it's the teacher's purpose and job, they're ready for college. But I need a purpose today, right? I need a value today. I need something that I feel good about today, not this long-term thing downstairs, right? So it's very interesting. It's like they're feeling that separation, which is good, it's a healthy thing. But they, so I love the fact that you guys are bringing that back to giving them something for today.
As you can see, the group is very passionate about this work. And thanks for our participation this evening. So again, kudos for our wonderful guidance team. You, the board, as well as Keely, for allowing us to bring her on to help us do this.
Thank you, thanks for coming and, you know, spending your day so that we are better informed of what we are doing. And I'm very impressed.
I want to make one quick comment. We have some speakers who want to speak on this too.
Bill, can I say something to you after you're done?
Absolutely. New policy, yeah.
Please, please, no problem.
Anyway, a few weeks ago, Shereen sent out an article that had to do with suicide in high school. And I don't know if you guys, I don't remember the name of it.
Palau, so you fight so-
So it's Palau, which had some shocking parallels to Laguna Beach. And not to put them down because I was in that, reading that article, but it's affecting, so I've been thinking about it for weeks now, about the parallels between that district and Laguna Beach. And how whether we intend it or not, in high school today, we created such a pressure cooker. I was talking to a friend of mine who went to high school with me. I said, not only did I not have these kinds of courses that they're teaching at the high school today, we didn't, you know, have them to the larger degree when we went to college. So these kids today are taking these, you know, advanced courses, honors courses, as if it's a normal thing. And then the kids in the middle also, what, what, how are they dealing with the failed expectation? Because not everybody can go to that school there, everybody keeps telling you, you got to go to. And the kids who go into junior college trying to place themselves in career or that. And then you're talking about the kids at the very bottom, maybe two hundred and ninety-six, that's a shocking number with Ds and Fs. How are they emotionally handling it? And even taking away divorce or taking away financial problems, just being in school today is so much harder than it was when I was young. It's just a pressure cooker. And it's just, that's a reality of what we're dealing with. And especially in a place like Laguna where we do have wealth, we do have parents with very high expectations. I'm one of them, you know? I hope I balanced it out. I probably didn't do it well enough. You know, you keep, I keep asking myself these questions of, what more can we do? I'm not asking you to do more because you sound like you're doing plenty. But it's a tough thing to be a kid today, you know? And you got to recognize that, it's a real tough thing to be a kid. So I just want to just briefly talk about that issue because I know these kids are, it's tough, whether in the middle, the bottom, or the top. There's, there's stressors today. Frankly, when I was, it seems, looking back, I was pretty lighthearted when I went to college. I mean, high school, maybe that was me. But maybe, that's good, I didn't feel that stressed out. So I want to thank you for what you're doing. If you guys get new ideas about what this board can do to help on this issue, please communicate it to us.
We'll be back.
I think there should be more meetings, more discussions of this issue than others because a lot of times, mental health, it's the last thing people want to discuss. It's the person we should. Yeah, I understand. And so it's always had that history of gee, I don't want to discuss that, but we should be discussing it. There's not a person probably, you know, who hasn't had a rough period, you know? I'm one of them, I'll be very frank. So, you know, that's out there. And these kids are living in a tougher world today. So thank you for what you do, and I think-
And I, yeah, I would just, would you forward me the link to the Patrick Cook DVD?
You know, I have copies, so, yes, absolutely.
Because I literally just spent 45 minutes on the phone with my daughter today. And if I had just said, find purpose today, and tomorrow we'll figure it stuff out, I could have avoided a lot of feelings. And, and I thank elementary so much for the resiliency of the strengths. And what, what is your, what are you good at, innately good at? Because everyone's good at something, but it's, they spend so much time comparing themselves to someone else. And again, if we're getting used to our youngest kids, when they get to you guys, I won't be, I would not be in your office at so much. I mean, I, seriously, you guys have talked me off the ledge from the time we started the night before until Annie graduated last year. It's, I can't thank you enough as a parent. But also, when I hear you, it helps me be, even now, a better parent. So, or at least a more mindful one. So thank you. I truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. That's awesome.
And one thing I want to add to what Bill was saying about the pressure also is that it's not just all the classes, it's the fact that by the time they get home, you get an email, I'm not sure if I'm looking at it, but at OSHA, you get email every day saying what they've missed and what's going on, wants to be here, right? But it's just like, she walks, like, I don't know, where is she today? It's like the pressure of that, you can avoid your parents when we're younger, right? Like, just another pressure.
And I just want to add that parenting today, I'm a parent of a three and a five-year-old. And I don't know what it was to parent a three and a five-year-old 20 years ago, but I think parenting also has risen in the amount of anxiety and comparisons and deficit focus, that we can do a lot for our families, not just our students. So that's, that's I-
And you guys do some, I mean, I was going to say, you guys have done so much work.
The article about parenting, because that work, too, where she could be doing too much for her kids. Tell me, little Johnny, if I, you won't make it to Berkeley.
Before we parent, maybe for computers with normalcy.
If we let them go, could we have the speakers?
Yes, yes, we have, we-
Might be important.
Hang on, give just a bit more because we have just a few speakers. Sherry Moore and Ms. London want to make a comment. Sherry?
I wanted to mimic what Kedda said, and I'm not going to repeat because if I do, I'll probably start crying or something really embarrassing. So, but I think I've been in many of your offices about my children over the years as well. But I think the timing is great because I know that I've talked to Shereen, I've talked to Chris, and I want to thank you also for addressing this issue because I know I walked out of the depression-suicide presentation and thinking, this is really great. I love the fact that it was presented to the teachers, to the students, and to the parents because it definitely opened up the dialogue and gave you talking points to use. It was a great idea that I would certainly encourage you to use at that level that if, if, it's not, so that it is a dialogue and not necessarily something to address. But even at the middle school and younger, maybe not younger, I mean, I'm not the expert, you guys are. But one of the things that still seems to be that I didn't really hear a lot of talk about was talking about it and having it be a dialogue that, that is just discussed or maybe it's used in the classroom. And what is the socioeconomic impact of depression and suicide on our community, on our economic standards? I mean, what is all that? Can they use that so that it's, it's maybe not so personal, so that they can have dialogue amongst themselves? So that when they do need to talk to somebody about it, it's not so scary? That it is just a fact of our, of our time? And that they're not afraid to address it? See, there I go. But by the time they get to high school, they are very stressed. So anything you can do at this universal level that's really personal and really touches them, that is, that is, that's everything. I mean, I know at the TOW presentation on Monday, we talked about how the more, um, not just one-on-one when there's an issue, but to really give them this toolbox to pour from. And if we can start as a district, giving them the tools and building on the toolbox, by the time they get to the high school, it's not so difficult. Because I think our community, as I've said many times before you, I think there's, there is this blanket of, everything is great. And when you pull that blanket off, it really isn't. I mean, you have, you know, it's great, but there's a lot that isn't said. And there's a lot of kids that will sit there and they might, what are my kittens? Now it's public, so I can't say anything. But, you know, there's, there's, there's things that just aren't said publicly that when you get home, the kids say something totally different. And that's because this blanket of what our community wants, what the kids want them to look at in each other is not what's going on at home and how they really feel. So if we can give them the toolboxes, it is okay. Everybody does feel different. Ninety-eight percent, I think was their quote, Dr. Weitman said. Ninety-eight percent of the kids, they all just, they all think that there's something wrong with them. They just don't want to say it. So dialogue, if I'm not feeling great today is a normal conversation, maybe that is a good step too. So, thank you. You guys are doing great.
Mr. Harry Nilson. Mr. Harry Nilson. Well, that was an excellent presentation. I'll commend everybody. And the professionalism that was exhibited and expressed tonight was really impressive. You know, I think it's, it's interesting because, you know, somebody said, well, there's 47% or 46% of kids nationwide have mental health problems. Well, the reality is 100% of adults and kids have mental health problems. And I was talking to some people at the community coalition meeting and saying, somebody got to do a bumper sticker that says, anybody that hasn't been in therapy is crazy. And so this is really important. You know, it's funny because we're familiar with, you get, go to the dentist if you've got a toothache, and you got a coach, it's a coach if you want to play football. Well, what these people here are, these are life coaches. These are emotional coaches. And we all need, you know, we know what it means to have a personal trainer if you want to get in better shape. I should do that myself. But the, the point is, these are personal trainers. And I, I think that it's just exceptional that the school district has this program, you know? So everybody kind of giggled when somebody said about dressing up like superheroes. Well, why do kids like superheroes? The reason superheroes exist is because when kids first have the order in their life shattered and they don't feel safe, superheroes are all about coming in and making it safe again. And I think what you guys do is you make it safe in our schools, kids, you're superheroes. And so I commend you for that. I think the board needs to sharpen its focus, though. Because the fact of the matter is, there should be better coordination. I went to some of these community coalition meetings, and they were talking about, well, let's, let's show the public that there's more good news. And one of the things I liked about this presentation tonight is that it's okay to talk about problems. We get into this good news culture where anybody that is talking about a problem is like negative. And so why is that person being negative? And, you know, the community coalition people were saying, well, let's do a public education program where we talk about 57% of our kids choose not to drink alcohol. Or 46% of our kids. And I go, why would you do that? Because then you just make the kids that have made a bad choice feel more isolated and hopeless. And so we've got to, you know, you know, we've put a lot of time and energy and political capital into the social health ordinance. While we were putting all that political capital into the social health ordinance, overdoses from narcotics went up 196% in Orange County. While we were spinning our wheels over social health ordinance, which has never been enforced in the city. And, and we haven't had the kind of critical impact on kids from, and so we ended up with an alcohol-only social health ordinance, and we neglected the prescription drug problem. Last thing I want to say is, there should be better coordination with the PTI, PTA, you know, the coffee break program. There should be a possibility for parents who go to those PTA coffee breaks to get referrals for family therapy from other organizations in the community that you, that you can refer people to. And last thing I'll say is this. I think any part of a comprehensive social emotional psychological support program in this school district needs to begin with in elementary school, focus and upgrade in middle school, and really get serious in high school, a program about education on what THC does to the human brain. Because right now, with the legalization of marijuana and with the medical marijuana that's going on, including at our high school campus, kids do not understand, parents do not understand, what THC does to the human brain. And we have a lot of kids here whose problems are being aggravated because there's a unrealistic naive attitude that THC is harmless, and it's not harmless. And this, this school board should commit itself to a comprehensive educational program on THC in our school. Thank you. Rita Robinson?
I didn't have any comment, I just was wanting to-
Oh, you wanted to identify themselves, okay. Hopefully, we did that. The speakers should, you asked that the speakers, the speakers identified themselves first, I think we did that.
That's they talk, right before they talk.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, and I'm casual. For elementary, I didn't mean Berkeley, I said elementary, I said, first I said there.
Five things that you thought, um, were, you know, were not good about you, and everybody would have, and then all the kids were, all the things that were great about you, and you're bad. So, you're walking along, and that's, and you're kind of finding these connections about where you feel your failures are, and then you later get to perform and steal the traits. Like, it was really cool, I think, with Berkeley, like, I think those Berkeley's elementary.
Okay, so you see LA Berkeley, I have to Google the speaker.
Is that all the speakers?
Anybody else like make a comment?
We might unlet our wonderful speakers go.
Yeah, we'll let our speakers go. Thank you, guys. Okay, we'll move on to number 14, first meeting of board policies. Dr. Smith?
Yes, uh, our board policy committee met in December, early December, and we reviewed the policies listed there. These were reviewed by the committee, and we did a little wordsmithing happen, because these are basically, um, policies that emerged from laws and regulations and policies that we have not had in place. But since we have, um, expanded our social media, for example, we needed policies to regulate those. We needed to update our bullying policy, as well as our immunization policy, transitional kindergarten. And we needed to get a policy in place for our English language learned program. These policies, they're all presented as a first reading, and so, staff is ready to take any feedback or input you wish to share with us regarding these policies.
Any comments?
And I had Shereen on, um, just the immunizations to kind of get a comprehensive look so parents can see, which if they're not like, I'm nice, they can just hope to see what they need to do. Like, I thought that was important for us to have on our website, kind of tie it into all of this.
Immunizations, and I did email Pam Mash and Irene today, Amazon.
Yeah, no, actually, I thought that would be helpful to, to support the changes in our policy. We also have the financial appearance. And then on bullying, was, um, what's a parent that know what it was to?
Or what?
What, which immunizations, like, if they haven't immunized, they're found at all? Like, what do they actually need to have to be here, right? I don't know if all pediatricians have a conversation with the board there.
Is there a letter or something, was that?
Yeah, there's, I think there's something goes out.
There's a letter that goes out with the registration packet that'll have the information about it. It'll list everything, and then it'll have the specific immunizations, as well as the specific age groups that are affected, um, that need to be immunized.
Is that also on the website of district?
It wasn't, that's why I'm saying that's.
It's not on the website yet, because we were going to do the thing to board policy.
Just because of the controversy of that issue, you just have it listed there.
Yeah, it'll be also part of the, um, the, the whole packet that we posted on the website with all the information, that registration.
Would, um, I'm just looking at the agenda, the length of the agenda, the other issues you have to be pulled. Do you want to, um, do, does anyone have any questions on the new policies? Can we clarify? Um, are we ready to move these forward for second meeting? Yes, okay, great.
Do you have a question?
No, because we have any speakers.
It's not as hard.
Well, is there any speakers on this issue? This is the issue of first reading board policies.
Okay. Okay, that's in mind.
Okay, moving on to number 15. This is information item, presentation, monthly financial report, Mr. West.
This is the, uh, November 30th ending monthly report. We do get a certain, a limited amount of property taxes in, in and of, although a majority of property taxes show in December, so this, uh, report is routine for that period. One, uh, transfer that is in here, um, is transferred made from PACD to financial to, to the general fund in order to pay for the old debt contribution, which you'll show up in next report in the same, uh, as a payment to the trust. Uh, other than that, everything in the report is, uh, in line with, uh, the.
Questions or comments?
Jean, thanks for putting all of those funds in there and the definitions of what you're going to read.
Public comments? Moving on to number 16. Temporary inter-planned transfer of $6 million initiated on September 23, 2015, was returned to the special reserve for non-capitalized outlay fund, ran 17M per annum on January 5, 2016, Mr. West.
This is just a note of the board, letting you know that the money has been, now, was used by the general fund and now is back into the special reserve, uh, it's done with cash for purposes again. Property tax is coming in December, so from October, November, December are the little cash months, so bring them in and putting them back.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for making sure that you see out completely.
Public comment? Moving on to 17. Action item, presentation of leadership profile report and selection of criteria for superintendent, Tracy Wilson.
Yeah, I'd like to invite Dr. Farley and Dr. Malafati to come and, uh, share the results of all of the work, part of what they've been doing.
You mind if we sit right here?
Oh, yeah, please. They're just comfortable. Good evening.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us back tonight. Um, I'm aware of the fact that you've sat through some passive moments, and I would defer to the board in terms of how you'd like to discuss this. Uh, the most expedient way might be to just get to your questions, and I can bring you, in addition to that, an update on just where we are with the search. You've received a very detailed profile report, 23 or 24 pages. It was, I thought, fascinating to put together. It accurately reflects what all of the stakeholders, uh, shared with us. When you count the number of people that we met with in groups and interviews and in the respondents to the online survey, we have information from 449 people. And I was very careful in putting the, um, themes together, that they, I only identified a theme or a, a trend in the information if it was repeated numerous times by numerous groups. You know that we met with students, parents, community members, leaders, all of you individually. And I think the profile, which is, I'm told, posted on the website for any residents to see or any staff members to see, um, I think it really does reflect, uh, really lots of positive things about your district and where you are as a district in terms of how you move forward. The one overarching theme, I think, was that you're at a critical point, and there's a lot of interest in your superintendency and your community. And your community is very, believes it's very informed about what goes on in the district. There was no shortage of opinions and ideas and, uh, issues, concerns, and, and challenges discussed. So, with that general, um, introduction, I'd open it up to your questions about the profile. And then at the end, I can give you where we are with the search.
It's a lot of information. It's a lot of information, and it was, it, it was so much fun going through. I did call Joe and ask him some questions, and I must have read this five or six times, I like data, and I kept asking you the numbers and trying to figure out if there are any other patterns within there. Um, but, boy, I, I have done this professionally for so many years, and this is, this is amazing. You both truly did a great job in getting people to open up, to be comfortable, to share, to be excited about the district, to share the things they, they're really happy with and, and their aspirations. And in person, and you guys did a marvelous job. People, people commented on how they enjoyed the conversation.
I think it was important that, um, anyone who shared something can go to this document and find it. And I, I felt that the integrity of our process would have been negatively impacted if that were not the case. And, and I took the responsibility of identifying these themes very, very seriously, because when I say that stakeholders have a concern about X, Y, and Z in the Laguna Beach University District, I want to make sure that that is actually what we heard. And we heard lots of concerns, but I, I want to tell you that we heard lots of wonderful things, and we heard lots of really good things from your students. I love the fact that they feel safe in their schools, um, they feel connections with their teachers, they love their district, and I think your community does as well. And this is something that can be marketed to an incoming superintendent, because we're telling candidates that this is an extraordinary opportunity for leadership. I say it differently in the document, but we heard from stakeholders who are very proud of the achievement here, but think that this achievement can be taken to another level and that the potential exists to make this one of the most significant school districts in the country that can be on par with the best private and public schools anywhere. And I believe that that does exist here, and that that's the kind of leader that you're looking for to take you to that next level.
I agree, and then I think that, that one of the most beautiful things in here was the teachers, they love the students. I mean, they, they appreciate the students, they, you know, and I know they have the connection with them all day long, but to, the focus was on the, on the students in the results, and it was just this beautiful, because you know it, but then seeing it, it was just beautiful. And then the only gap I saw within what everyone wants, community, parents, teachers, was really just about the, about wanting more. And the teachers were like, you know, we're doing a lot, and the parents were like, we want more. And then we want more was above the national level, we want more? And, but the teachers were really below it, and so, I thought, okay, so maybe that's a message of like, all the things we are doing, like, tonight, all the things we do, like, really sharing what things we do. But it was absolutely beautiful, and a lot of the things we, we want are, are similar to what you guys find nationally, and a couple of things that made us kind of unique, what's unique about us, the things at the top, and so.
I was actually interested in how much higher we were on the things we were high on, like, way higher on, you know, foster, public, professional, that kind of stuff. I just found that, these things, I found very interesting, um, the percentages. And I appreciate, I appreciate that, because it does give you a snapshot, uh, and kind of a, a good place to start. And then you see, you know, where, it, does that across the board, people feel that strongly? Or is it one particular group that is, is all over that, so.
And do you provide this to the, what do you need to, to the candidate that is hired? They'll see all this data as well?
We provide it to all the candidates.
All of them, okay, sure.
And let me tell you why. A savvy candidate is going to know that this is a public document and may go online and get it. And someone who doesn't realize that would be at a disadvantage if they didn't get a copy. So, all of the candidates will get a copy once you approve the final version. If this is it tonight, then that's one that we'll, we'll give them. And we also typically include, um, a question about the profile. For example, we might ask, what are the implications for your leadership? And what might we expect from you in three months, six months, in, in one year, given the profile that you read about this position? And, and that's, that's a really good starting question, because they're going to be able to hopefully articulate what this data will mean for their leadership.
That's great, that's great.
So, that is actually where my question was, what are, where's this going now? And, and how is it going to be incorporated into selection process?
Well, the way the process works is we use this instrument as a screening instrument for the candidates. So, um, everything that's in there is going to influence our conversations and our screening of candidates. I suspect that some people will get the profile and, and tell me that they're not ready yet for this particular district, because they're not at the experiential level that we would need to, to deal with some of the things that are referenced in the, in the document.
And I, I, you answered, you formulated a question for this. I would think that you might formulate one, what?
Oh, of course, yeah, of course. And we'll work together. I'll meet with you again to develop the specific questions. We'll have some standard ones, we have some suggestions, I'll help write them. But I want to hear ones that each of you would like to ask as well. Um, what will happen next is, uh, we have about two more weeks of recruitment, and I'll tell you more about the numbers later. And then we'll start doing screening down to the top candidates. Rich and I will do preliminary screening interviews, and then we'll identify a slate of whatever the number is. Could be six, could be eight, it could be five, could be 10. We'll, we'll figure out how things fall out, and then we'll start scheduling those interviews.
Well, I mean, I, this is, it has so much in it, that I, and I certainly wouldn't want to alter it. I mean, it really reflects what we asked you to do, which is to gather this information. So, I mean, as far as if you're asking us, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add anything. It's so comprehensive, although I wouldn't take anything out of it.
I was impressed by the complexity of what, of the complexity of the input. I've done nine of these, and this was the most fascinating process I've participated in. And it's partly because of the incredible community support that this district has. I also liked the generational, um, connection, that generations of families have gone through the district and are still here, and they're proud of that. Um, I've told this to some of your staff members, I loved your high school students, but we talked to 68 high school kids, and really, we could have just met with them, because they told us everything that everybody else told. And, uh, that was pretty interesting as well.
So, that, so the candidates will also get, because I thought those comments were very insightful.
Yeah, yes.
And so, they will get, they will get the comments as well as.
The full package.
Okay. Yeah, well, the student comments are certainly going to indicate what the industry is going to be able to, with the students' parents.
Well, but, but I thought that was so interesting.
It's very honest.
Well, plus, I love the one, either gender's fine. And then under 50, I know that was. Okay, other questions or comments?
Well, and that's something else Joe and I talked about was that as, um, as they talk to candidates who are not active or they're passive or having in their job, they get them to start listening to opportunities. And so, what happens is, they'll start listening to other search consultants' opportunities as well. And so, some of those really great candidates that they're talking about, they want to, could end up going somewhere else, just in a sense of now they're, now that they're kind of considering moving, or they get them to think about it, they'll start thinking about other opportunities too. And so, you do start having some, and then you, other recruiters, you're talking to other people, right? And they're coming this way to you, they can open up, it could come both ways, but it can start shifting as we get closer to this stage.
That's true.
Yeah. And it all becomes a timing thing of us being responsive to when they need us to start meeting with people and sort of that.
In terms of strengths of the district, I want to make sure I mention a couple, because they came across really strongly. One, the financial condition of the district, and I also learned that it wasn't always in the state that it currently is in. So, the, the financial condition was really a, a very significant strength and, and a point of pride. Um, and also the condition of your school facilities and the commitment of staff. Uh, those were three things that came up really strongly, the others I already mentioned. But those were three additional ones that I think you should be proud of. So, any other questions? I'll tell you where we are with recruiting and the numbers and so forth, unless you have other comments or questions.
Just if you could include in your comments about recruiting and, um, the, we had a conversation about the quality of folks that are, you're getting, what's your impressions of it?
Yes, um, there's, we have currently, um, 38 people who, who are, are going to apply or have applied. Don't hold me to that, oh, yeah, 30 is. It includes nine superintendents, one deputy superintendent, 10 assistant superintendents, three chief academic officers, two chief of staffs, two principals, a vice prince, president of operations of the private company, and an owner of an educational-related company. So, 38 people. I've gone through their applications continuously over the last two weeks. And just as an aside, you have to always be very careful that you don't develop a positive or negative bias about a candidate. And it's tricky, because the slightest thing will trigger your impression and, or trigger something positive, and I've made myself be very judicial about that, because you could get into this bias that then either positively or negatively influences where you go with the candidate. So, I'm constantly looking for the negative and the positive, as odd as that sounds, because I know how many times in my career, I was so sure that I was right about a candidate that I hired, you know, when I was superintendent for whatever job, and then I ended up getting disappointed, and I would look back retrospectively and, and realize I committed too early to them being perfect. I'm exaggerating, you know what I mean? And so, I want you to be careful with that too, and I'll guide you through that. Um, I'm very impressed with the, with the slate of candidates so far, and we're not done. But among these, um, 38 people are, I would say, eight, nine, 10, who could probably do the job. And there also are some real stars that, uh, And there also are some real stars that at least in my initial checking, seem like the real thing, with the real, you know, on the road, on the ground experience that will be a good match. So I'm very optimistic. And as a search consultant, this is a frightening part, a frightening time, you know, when you get to the stage where you're getting about to close the position, and do you have the candidate that you want? And I I think we I think we're going to have the candidate. So I think we're in a good place.
So and when is it closing?
We're going to keep the the recruitment will close on the 22nd, so we'll continue recruiting until January 22nd. We're going to present a final slate to you in early February. And then our hope is that we'll be able to do preliminary to do interviews with you and candidates in late in late February, or maybe beginning of March, just depending on on how things work out. These are all busy people, and there are a couple of them that are from out of state. I'm always suspicious of out of state candidates because typically we hire Californians 80% of the time for California jobs. But there are a couple from out of state that are just pretty impressive and who have lots of local references. That's how I found out about them. So I feel strong about that. So.
Then are they originally from here and then they went out of state?
I I have both I have both situations. You you we do experience people who've moved out and want to come back. But I do have a couple of candidates that are sitting superintendents from another state that are well respected here and there. So that's good news too. So next steps? We will meet with you to develop questions. I will keep you up to date with my weekly emails.
Thank you for those, by the way, and they're very helpful.
Good, I'm glad, I I you never say anything, so I mean, did they get them?
I was supposed to answer.
You might say thanks, Joe. So I know you got it.
Okay, sorry. Why I sent this at 5:00 in the morning?
I work on it all week, and so, you know, I but I said it on Friday, so you're in the habit of getting it on Friday.
Holidays included.
I can call you on the holiday or email you and say, it's done on the holidays.
I didn't want you to break that habit of looking for that on Friday, so that's why I sent it on, was it Christmas?
Christmas, I was like, oh.
It was Christmas.
It was Christmas.
That's great.
It was good.
All right, anything else?
Do you want a motion to approve the profile?
Yes.
So move second.
Okay, so Jen, and then second was Carol. All the favor.
I'm on it.
And now I guess we should move to, are we fully done, okay? Comments, any, because we moved public.
You want to hear from the public?
Yeah, public comment, if any.
No, I just.
No?
Yeah, with, yes.
Did you want to say something?
We need to set up a meeting that will start having those questions.
Yes, let me say that Lisa and Victoria have been very, very helpful. And I'll work through their offices to to get everything scheduled. And we'll even start to tentative schedule some weekend interview to times or evening times, so we'll get all that then. That'll be our kind of the next shoe to drop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for it.
Public comment, Penny?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, we're moving on to 18, now, thanks, guys. Number 18, revised instructional minutes and final exam bell schedule for the Lemon Beach High School Darlene Messenger.
And Amy, Amy's coming forward, I'll be.
Chris, any motion to approve?
Amy, would you just give a brief description or Mr. Hertz, why we are asking for an adjustment in bell schedule?
Sure.
Briefly in the key we're there.
Yeah, when when the contract was negotiated last year, the high school eliminated the or the contract eliminated the the springtime open house. And so we'll be doing a full school day on that day, which provided us with about 158 additional minutes to the to the school year total that put us up. And 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 last year, we were uncomfortable with the length of our final exam schedule. For those final exams, we're going to keep around two hours. We ended up going two and a half hours last year just to absorb what we needed to do to get to our totals. So this was an opportunity to take some of those minutes, pull them a little bit out of that final exam. So we shortened with the we worked with department sheriffs to shorten them up a little bit. So we're taking 10 minutes off of each final exam period and starting a little later in the day. And then that result at the end of the year is we'll end up with more minutes anyway.
After working out the minutes, it comes out with a couple of extra.
Did you get, did my questions get through?
Yes, that's done.
So then you can go with these figures with me. It's on the final final exams, because now you already answered the one question, which is now that's where you've got the date.
Right.
On the on the on the Wednesday where it's 1104, so 130. But I looked at these, I kept looking at these numbers, start time, end times, and minutes, and then total minutes. And all the information above was the same, but the total's different, and I'm thinking, okay, I.
The information for the final exams. Split to the.
I don't have it, I don't have it.
So if you look at the on the backside, where the. Secondly.
Final exam, that's what I'm looking at.
The final exam schedule for each day, there are less minutes for the total number of totally final exam minutes. So the actual daily instructional minutes of the old schedule had 320 minutes of instructional time for the six final exam days. And then the current or the new one will only have 300 minutes. So that takes off the 200 or 120, because it's 20 times 6, 120 minutes. Then those minutes go back on the front page because the number of days of minimum days is shortened to one, and the number of full school days is increased from 103 to 104.
Right.
So with those calculations, it comes out that there is technically 20 more instructional minutes in the whole year.
So within the start and end time on final exam days, there's a different structure within those, that's where you're getting minutes. And that's where you're getting minutes, because I was like, it's the same thing, oh, it's the same thing, exactly, 30 to 1, so where.
Oh, I think we didn't update the the start and end time, sorry about that.
The start and end time is 8 and 110.
Okay, so instead of 7:30 to 1, okay. I kept doing two and two and knocking.
Okay, no, yeah, it's it's I'm sorry, it's eight, it's eight and 110.
Thank you.
Eight AM, 110, yeah, I believe.
So what else?
And I think it's, I think he gave the final exam bell schedule on a separate page, just didn't get updated on the minutes. We'll update it, um, for the additional minutes.
Right?
Right.
Five about five hours and 10 minutes. So that's the 20 minutes you're talking about, okay, got it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, all the favor.
I'm on it.
Moving on to 19, approval, excuse me, approval of board development workshop, Sharina.
This item, as we discussed briefly at our last board meeting, is proposed. It's something that is good practices for a board to meet regularly, and that can be quarterly, every twice a year, once a year, to review roles and responsibilities, to ensure the board is performing at its highest level in order to best serve the students and the schools and the district, make sure the lines of communication are open, and that there's agreement on the values and the protocols and the, I guess, practices that are necessary to make sure the district is running well. And so this, as I mentioned, arose at the last meeting. We have done board development workshops in past years. And so this proposal is reported tonight to to seek board agreement to engage in a board development workshop to once again review board's roles, responsibilities, and protocols, and make sure that everyone is on the same page and a good cohesive team, especially if you move forward to hiring a new superintendent. You want to be as cohesive as possible.
Can I get any motion, please?
So move second.
Got me, Kevin, and Carol, second. Next question?
Well, I'll start because I I contacted the bill's board president and asked that we delay this until we did hire the next superintendent. And so that we wouldn't be just repeating it. And we did, we didn't give the reference in something, we did this last December on the 11th. That's all the copies you put in here, the protocols and the core beliefs and things. And then in our communication, Bill disagreed with me. And so then I communicated back and said that if the majority ruled and wanted to go ahead with that at this time, that I would ask that we do it in-house and that we not bring in any outside person. So that's where that's where I am on this. My purpose would be to wait, and my next purpose would be that we do it as we did last year. We didn't have an outside person come in. I just, I think it's very important, basically, my strongest preference is that we wait for the new superintendent because it is always different.
And and in the CSBA training that Dee and I have gone to. Last year, yeah, in the sure. I mean, they do talk about governance and goal setting and defining like what words are, because if there's five people on your board and they ask you to say what discrimination is or something like that, there'll be four different answers, and then how can you? So you're saying those goals and for organization. And we, I mean, we went to some of those workshops, and they're absolutely fascinating. And at times, if a sick patient was here, it's a lot cheaper to raise someone here than it is for all of us to go there. Plus, you won't get, you know, a smaller window of, it's not all focused on what your board needs and all of ours. But I think that having the core beliefs and, you know, the goal for student achievement and the norms and the values actually will help us do a better job in selecting our superintendent because we're all going to be on the same page, and at some point, we all have to be on the same page to make that decision. So someone helping us in that process, I think would be very helpful that we're all on it. And also for superintendent, where we are is what we want for our board in selecting who, not just selecting, but then working with them when they come. And and they did say that these are done anywhere from annual to quarterly. You know, all the other people there were all talking about their experiences, and you know, I think one of the things that Victoria points out last time we had, she did mention December 11th, but they were talking about with someone who comes up and works with the board and helps you work through this process.
Jenny, was your question?
I'm, you know, I, they were going to do it again as soon as we hire somebody new. I'm kind of a Jan, we could probably do it ourselves, but if you feel so strongly that we bring somebody else in, then I really don't. I'm very intolerant as far as.
Okay, well, let me add one.
About people we've brought in, I haven't been there in high school.
Let me add one thing, because I said, listen, it could split, I did talk to Dee Perry, and she said, the board is going to split two, two in this. She would like me to bump it to the next meeting so she could have.
Oh, I don't want to split, I'll I'll climb the vote board, it's just I I I I my reservation, I think we I think we we benefit from from dialogue. I think I think that's true. I I will agree with Jan, I have been terribly impressed with the folks that we've had, I talked to Dr. Redwater, but.
Facilities. So Carol actually saw someone at CSBA, so that's the person that we contacted there with. It's with the one of the firms, we also.
Do you do as well in Darlene's?
Right.
Is it Carol, or did you?
One of the things, with all due respect to Jan, about having ourselves do it, it's awkward for us because it's hard for us to facilitate an honest conversation.
Oh, my God.
Because you're our bosses. And in order for, I I think it would be good for the entire government team to be part of the dialogue because we all need to understand the board's desires, the starch, protocols, and that you've all agreed and that we all understand so that we are functioning more smoothly because we get mixed messages, and it it's disconcerting sometimes, and people feel anxious or awkward or stressed. And I don't know, we don't tend to express that to you because we tend to just like pull up our socks and, you know, get it done. But it is, it is difficult, and I think I I get it, it's like we don't always feel comfortable with the outsider who's facilitating. But I also think there's something to be said, if we haven't liked any of them, maybe we need to look at ourselves.
Right.
As to where the problem lies. And so this is a person.
And I felt I didn't like him, I was just not, I wasn't comfortable.
Right, it was almost related to me.
Like Kathie Kessler. Yeah, I mean, she did, she did a fan, I feel like she's, I she is someone I'm actually comfortable with.
Yeah.
So if if this.
Yeah, because at what, so at the end of, well, you know, you go to all those conferences and you're exhausted, and you go at night, and you meet with all these vendors, and you're talking to superintendents, and then the person Dee and I remembered of all the people we met, and we met her separately, and then we met her taking a joint on one of our.
You don't have to sell me on it, it's.
No, but she was the one we remember. Right, so then I reached out to ask Darlene, hey, she has a desk, you ever met her? Oh, that's one of my favorites, was the one here.
She was great.
So, yeah, and it was one of those.
No, I know, so it's not going to be, I I'm fine with with it, I just, you know, I just feel like we've got so much going on. And, you know, it's one more thing, but we'll just make work.
It's easy for me to say because I'm a short timer, but it's an investment from my perspective. It's investment, time, energy, money, it's investment.
And so everybody should be there because I will, I'm I'm more amenable to the process. If everyone's going to be there simply because I do think that walking down this road with to hire the superintendent, I think it's, I think it would make everyone feel perhaps a little more comfortable. That, yeah, that 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 we're all hearing each other say what we're saying, so that when we do close the doors, they're not like, they're crazy, so. There we go. I said it.
Any other comments, sorry. Before we go, we will require a roll, we'll run this, is there any public comment?
You know, having sat through many, many meetings here where you all didn't discuss issues as openly as you just did, this is a healthy, you know, trend here. I really like the fact that you're having split votes, you know, for years, there was a conspiracy on this board to everybody vote unanimously so the public couldn't know what was going on in the board. And I think the board's made real progress in its governing process in that respect. You know, when there's divided votes and when people disagree, well, that's good, that's not bad. And, you know, I would admonish the board and encourage the board to be very careful about how it proceeds in this because, you know, I think that one of the problems that this district's had over the last few years, and it's been reflected in the law revision, the bylaw revision process, is an over-dependence on the California School Board Association. California School Board Association has a lot to offer, does a lot of fantastic stuff, and it's a great resource. But school governance comes from right here in this community where we are grounded as a community, not from Sacramento. And the California School Board Association is an industry association, and it has statewide standardization of procedure and process and bylaws and policies. And I think that it is usurps the local policymaking process, and it has to be dealt with very carefully. And, you know, the thing about it is, is that if you guys want to have a workshop, I would remind you that a couple of years ago, I recommended that the superintendent be sent to the Kennedy School of Government for the Senior Management of Government course to study community relations. And I think that if you had done that when I recommended it, a lot of the things that went on over the last few years that has caused a lot of controversy might have been averted. And I don't say that with, you know, critically towards her, I like the superintendent, and I really wish that she had gone because I did it when I was mid-career or even late career, and it's a good thing to do. And I hope if you get a new superintendent, you budget to send her to the Kennedy School of Government. They have a Senior Management of Government course, and it would have been a good investment. You know, the last meeting that you all had descended into parliamentary disarray. I believe that the board, the chair should have ordered board member vicars out of order when she attempted to enlist a member of the salaried public employee staff to support her attempt to convince the board to appoint, make a political appointment. That is an example of the erosion and breakdown of the dividing line between elected governing lawmakers, which is what you are, and the administrative staff that you employ. It's the same problem that identified when you sent the superintendent down to lobby the city council for approval of an ordinance that some people in the community supported, some people opposed it. And until the city council made a decision about that, it was a very wrong thing to do to send a salaried public employee down there to do the political bidding of the board. And two board members sat in the audience and supervised that, and it was a real violation of basic ethics of school governance, so.
Speaking of violations, you're over three minutes, but I want to give you 30 seconds to finish your thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just say that I support having a governance program. I think it should be open to the public, and I would volunteer. and I would volunteer to come in, I've done governance programs for treaty making, treaty teams in the National Security Council, and I think you're making a lot of improvements, and I would just offer my willingness to come and participate and support it in any way I can.
Uh, so we need to have a vote on this staff recommendation, a roll of this.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Norman, it?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
No.
Mr. Landeseal?
Yes. Moving on to twenty, resolution to approval of our, approval of resolution sixteen dash zero one, First Amendment to Grant Agreement, FCI dash SD dash twelve, by and between Orange County Children and Families Commission and the Riddley Unified School District, to enable the district to participate in the administration of the Early Development Index, EDI, for the period July one, two thousand fourteen to June thirty, two thousand seventeen, Ms. Messenger.
I'll move, second.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes, and.
Oh, would you like me to skip?
Bill.
It's, I think it's exactly what it says, and I don't know too much, so to be honest with you, I'm like, oh, I mean, we talked about.
You didn't know you were sorry to that area yet, well, you have known and delegated.
I have a good budget amount. Yikes.
It's a, and then because I'm giving a tiny amount more money and we have to do a resolution formalized.
It's a very small amount.
Yeah, like a couple hundred dollars, yeah.
Any discussion on this item?
There could be two hundred and twelve words in this script.
Right.
Do you have a little power for you, then?
Right.
Yeah, we apparently have to do this, so.
Always others.
Thank you, right.
Public comment before we vote, need a roll, hold on this, please.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Norman, Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Landeseal?
Yes. Moving to twenty one, approval of resolution sixteen dash zero two, establish inter-fund transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars from the general fund to the special reserve fund for facility repair and replacement program for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Um, approval?
Move approval, second.
Okay, that was, that's good, and Jan, and this is Mr. West.
This is part of the twenty year plan for funding for, for.
Questions?
Thank you.
Public, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, I, uh, commend you, Mr. Board President, for the efficiency with which you ran the meeting tonight. The problem is, is that you were so efficient, and, and because of my lack of efficiency, I got, uh, I got a little lost, you know. On item fifteen, the, you know, most of the, most of the items in the agenda, each page is enumerated. But on item fifteen, um, when I was trying to find the item, when Mr. West was preventing, uh, presenting the interim report, um, there's just one page that has fifteen on it, and in his entire very thick report, it doesn't have the page numbers. And so I was a little bit thrown off, and then you moved six, fifteen, sixteen, thirteen, and I got left in the dust, and that's okay, because I'm not a numbers guy anyway. But, um, what I wanted to do with respect to this matter is I wanted to ask Mr. West, or ask the board, and, and, and my suggestion, uh, would be that, um, if Mr. West could identify on items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then again on this item, and any of the items on the agenda tonight that involve inter-fund transfers, um, that they, we identify whether the original source of any of those funds was the rainy day fund. Cause I'm losing track, I'm just a guy here in the audience, you know, and I'm losing track of which of these inter, inter-fund transfers ultimately go back to the rainy day fund, because, what's that?
It says sixteen, that's, cause we took it out in September and it went back, that's what he said right there, that was the one.
Uh, where did he say that in there?
That was not, it says temporary inter-fund transfer of six million dollars initiated on September twenty third, was returned into special reserve for non-capital outlay fund.
Right.
That's rainy day fund seventeen.
So, did it go out of fund, then went back into the fund?
Yeah, back in.
Okay, that's what I, I wanna do, and maybe, maybe I should just email Mr. West tomorrow and ask him to clarify those things, I'm sure.
We'll get, we'll get to that in a minute.
All right, thank you.
And sometimes if there's questions like that, they're real technical, the best thing to do is to email to Mr. West, I'm sure he'll respond to it. All right, so we are at, uh, twenty two. So, okay, Jan's pointing out, it's at the bottom of some page, but it isn't very small.
Did you vote on twenty one?
Twenty one, we have to vote on twenty one, did we not?
We did have a hundred.
Did we?
No.
Need a roll call on that.
Roll call, right.
Okay.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Norman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Mr. Landeseal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now moving to twenty two, approval of resolution sixteen dash oh three, establish inter-fund transfer for one million, four hundred dollars from the general fund to the special reserve fund for capital improvement plan two thousand fifteen dash two thousand sixteen.
Move approval, second.
Just a guess.
We approved the capital improvement plan and the master plan, uh, the plan is fourteen million dollars in projects. Uh, the plan is based on a ten-year replacement program, so there's a one point four million dollar inter-fund transfer coming from the general fund into the capital improvement.
Questions or comments? Public comment? Okay, uh, we need a roll call, vote on this apparently, so.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Norman?
Yes.
Mrs. Fickers?
Yes.
Mr. Landeseal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number twenty three, approval to increase hours of instructional assistance by legal support at TOW from three point two five hours per day, ten months per year, to five point seven five hours a day, ten months per year, uh, Ms. Winston.
Move approval, second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, that's one of these.
So as you know, we've made a number of program improvements to our English learner services, so this year, um, as we were rolling out staffing, we've noticed increased needs at specific times of the day at Top of the World, um, and so we really see a need to, um, increase the amount of time for staff, um, so that they can cover all the, all of the different grade levels throughout the day.
Discussion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Public comment? Uh, this we can do with a voice vote, so on, maybe we can't, all in favor? Number twenty four, award of architectural service contract to SBA Architects to provide design and construction documents for CLC and music classrooms at Top of the World Elementary Schools for an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, includes five thousand for reimbursable expenses. This is, uh, approval on this, I'm gonna get this.
Second.
Second, okay, so that was good, uh, Carol. This is Mr. West again.
Yes, Mr. Dixon can come forward to ask, answer some questions on this one, but they're, uh, twenty four and twenty five are two projects we plan on bringing next, uh, meeting in our draft, which relates to some of those improvements to the facilities master plan, which we said we would revise every year. Uh, two of those projects are, are slated to, to be able to do as early as the summer, um, and that's why we would wanna be in on the architectural plans for those. Jeff has worked with the attorneys and with the architects in, uh, bringing the proposal to you, is you also wanna share about this contract?
Yes, thank you, Mr. West, uh, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, this, um, contract specifically for the CLC portable replacements with permanent rooms and the music classroom, uh, one unique feature that we're bringing into the contract is to update our eligibility so that we can get in line or possibly pursue state, uh, grant funds from the school facility program. The funds are currently out, but there is a, um, ballot measure coming up on the November sixteenth to replenish the funds and reintroduce the school facility program. So we would be eligible for modernization funding grants for the portable replacements and potentially new construction grants for the music classroom building, um, so this would allow us, there's that twenty five thousand dollar not to exceed amount in that contract so that we can get ourselves in line, so if a state bond is passed, uh, we should be able to expect a few hundred thousand dollars of rumors.
So, so reimbursement, so we would go ahead and do these over the summer, and then we can apply for reimbursement?
Yeah, the reason we're going, uh, we're trying to get approval before the, the tenure plan update is approved, is so that we can get these done over summer. Um, we have tentative construction timelines that will finalize as we get more utility and groundwork information. But right now, it looks like we'd be able to mobilize the day after school that's out for summer break and have it done and ready for, um, school by the time kids get back, so we wouldn't require any room housing.
Yes.
This is.
Okay, so no room housing.
That's our goal, um, because it's, the site's so impacted, uh, I think if we start now with the design and get the buildings through Division of C R Protect and bid and ready for start of construction, uh, right when school's out, um, I think we can pull it off to have it ready before school starts.
Yeah, I was very happy to see this as you all know, because I like living away from portable, so those portals have been there.
A hundred years.
As long as I've been there, that's why they're there.
Yeah, a hundred years.
And now we're building beautiful new construction and some music rooms that enhance Top of the World, it will be a legacy we can leave to all these kids way down the line. So it's a wonderful thing we've been able to do, and I thank Mr. Dixon for his job and Mr. West, cause this is, this is a real improvement to get these music rooms where they're not right next to somebody else blasting a horn, and gives them the appropriate facility for that and the CLC classroom is sorely needed in everybody, cause they were well past their prime.
Question, is CLC, are they gonna maintain that, the, the like extra classroom they use for math and that sort of thing, or?
Yes, they're actually gonna increase the amount of square footage they currently have, because it, after our analysis of their educational space, they needed more.
I remember looking at it, by the way.
Um, and they're still gonna have a, a full nine hundred and sixty square foot extra room, but in addition to that, they'll have their office and restroom. So it's additional, um, I believe five hundred and forty square feet.
Excellent.
Other comments?
Mr. Curtis will be having.
Um, Mr. Curtis, separate from this item, but we have made improvements on the slope as well.
Uh, the slope, but also just the.
Interview.
It's just it's here, the aesthetics, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Any public comment?
I have one question, um, what happens if the, um, ballot initiative fails and there's no funding from the state?
We would self-fund it, as we're doing now, it's all being funded by us, we just wouldn't be needing any of it.
So we're not counting on that pass?
No, uh, we didn't, when this process started, we, that ballot initiative wasn't even introduced yet, so we didn't know it was gonna pass, so it's really actually incentive process as well. Uh, we just wanna make sure that we act, get ourselves ready, so that if it does pass, we're not really needing to.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Number twenty five, award of architectural services contract to DC Architects to design and provide construction documents for the installation of the Elmore Elementary School shade structures for an amount not to exceed thirty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, includes twenty five hundred dollars for reimbursable expenses. Mr. West and Mr. Dean, yeah.
No, 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 second.
I'll move it fast, I'm sorry. Got it. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. West, as part of the master planning process, it was determined, um, walking through and around Elmore that they did lack some shade. They had had some trees historically that had since died and had been removed, so we found locations, uh, specifically behind the two-story building where shade would really help not just the outdoor area behind them, but it was also shade the, uh, classrooms when the sun's there in the morning. Um, and also the blacktop, there's a large blacktop area, so you get a very large heat island effect. And so if we provided a shade area in addition to where they currently eat lunch, they wouldn't necessarily have a lot of lunch tables in, you'd have a break area where the kids could get off the blacktop and get some shade in the rest.
That's okay, so the rare chance of rain, they could run under it.
Please, and say that, would we be eligible for any kind of reimbursement, should the, not for this?
It, it has to be a classroom.
For the classroom.
But the, uh, the, uh, Elmore PTA has, uh, committed through the principle that, uh, Mr. Duddy wants to say their position on, uh, the shade structure with maybe the PTA.
So, uh, Elmore PTA has raised a lot of money and they have some surplus funds, they'd be willing to, uh, vote towards some, uh, these construction projects at the school, they were looking at the shade structures and the whole, I mean, reviewed the whole.
Thing.
Uh, thing, thank you, project, it's like, lacking the word, the whole project.
So we're not asking, we, we don't have them as a funding source for this architectural design work.
Right, that, they, for the network.
Uh, but they, uh, they, uh, did mention that they would put twenty thousand towards the shade structure, and that that was an important thing. Although, I do have to say, as the plan that we did receive on the master plan, I thought the Elmore plan was right on target, and, and Mr. Duddy would like us to do all, because they go on the more, yeah, because they were, where they were, uh, excellently, there was a lot of good plans.
Any else, public comment? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Moving on to twenty six, approval to delete board policy fifty fifteen, suspension and expulsion due process students with exceptional needs, and board policy fifty nineteen requires attendance by parent or legal guardian of a student as, in a student's classroom in certain cases where the student has been suspended by the student's teacher. Move approval?
Move approval, second.
Please note that, uh, we have the last page, five oh two oh is not being deleted, there's an error in the deleting them event.
So we passed a, the board passed a new policy in October that supersedes these old policies, and we need to delete these. They're now redundant and simple cleanup item.
Questions, comments, public? All in favor?
Aye.
Need your motion, are you ready?
No, I'm a little second.
Okay, who's second? All in favor?